Yeah. Ah.
Coming on? Yeah. Okay.
Ella Mahler is there.
Yeah, I would expect that.
Oops. We're not muted.
Why not?
Hey, Jesse.
Hey, Mark.
Thanks for the whoopee pie.
You're welcome.
Do we have Brett?
Haven't seen him yet.
Evening.
Um.
Sometimes it's difficult for Brett to get here at five.
Yeah.
Traveling to a computer isn't that long a commute.
Yeah, unless he's at another meeting.
Yeah, I guess it's got scheduled last minute.
Reading down your way Lawson.
Yeah, it's pouring.
Oh, really?
Yeah, and windy, wicked windy up here.
Yeah, we're going to discuss that in a minute and probably have a motion.
About the wind?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, right, I see.
As a planning board, we can stop the wind. Yes. It's in the, you didn't see that in the ordinances?
I didn't, yeah, that wasn't part of the MMA training.
Local control. Home rule. We'll give Brett a couple minutes.
I bring the magnifying glass and the tweezers, I think I have a check.
Picture of the problem. I didn't see any all summer and we found like three just the other day.
Brett's here, should we start?
What's that?
Brett's here.
Oh, Brett is here, okay.
Yeah.
I didn't see him, okay, great. Okay, we'll call the Tremont Planning Board meeting of October 28th, the order at 5:02. We, uh, Lawson. What's that?
Twenty-six, not twenty-eighth.
Oh, I'm sorry, I can't read. Twenty-six, you're correct. At five o'clock. Roll call Lawson Wilson.
Here.
Jeff Young.
Here.
Beth Goddard.
Here.
Brett Witham.
Here.
And myself, Mark Good, I'm here. And we also have our CEO, Town Manager Jesse Dunbar, and Recording Secretary, Secretary Jan Sprague, I assume she's here somewhere.
Yes.
And, uh, and the applicant and their team as well as, uh, Amy Chow and, uh, members of the public. Okay. Everybody's here, so we don't have to excuse any absences. Adjustment, adoption of the agenda. Justin and I talked about this, it's pretty stormy out and we're concerned about possible. Who is that? Somebody needs to mute. Uh, we're concerned about maybe losing power or internet service, some of us, so, Jesse suggested that we make a motion to, uh, that if the power or internet goes out for any planning board member, town staff, uh, or the applicant and their legal counsel, that, um, we reconvene tomorrow at 5:00 PM by Zoom. Somebody want to make that motion?
Um.
You say, was that a motion, Jeff, I'm sorry?
No, no, it's not, I was going to speak to it, but no one made a motion, so I'm not going to say anything.
Well, I'll make a motion, uh, uh, I'll make that a motion then, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion. Motion is second on the table to reconvene tomorrow at 5:00 PM by Zoom if any member of the planning board, town staff, or the applicant, or, uh, the attorney representing the opposition loses power or internet, uh, there's an internet outage. Any discussion?
I will not be available.
And I think that I probably wouldn't be available until 5:30 tomorrow. At the earliest, and six is more reasonable. I, I think this is a long shot, like, you know, I'm pretty optimistic, I think we'll be fine, but.
I do too, what do we, Jesse, what do you think, you want to change the time or date?
Up to you, I don't. I don't have a preference.
We can do it tomorrow at six, I mean, because if Jeff and I can't be there, there's no forum.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
Jeff. When are you available, Jeff?
When am I available? I am available on November 8th.
Why don't we just move forward?
Okay, then vote the motion down then, who, all in favor? Not hearing all, all opposed, Lawson?
Uh, yeah, or no, yes, I'm opposed.
Okay, post, okay, Jeff.
Yes.
Beth.
Yes.
Brett.
Yes.
Myself, yes, okay, motion fails. Okay, cross fingers, I think we'll be okay too. Now, we're going to open the public hearing on subdivision, uh, application and amendment to lot number four of the Uber subdivision. Uh, we'll open that public hearing at 5:06.
Mark, you skipped over your minutes.
All the minutes, I always do that, thank you, I don't know what I do without you guys. Okay, the minutes, anybody see anything, um, any issues with the minutes? If not, I'd take a motion to approve them, the minutes of, uh, October 12th.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second on the table to approve the minutes of October 12th, any discussion? Hearing none, Lawson?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes. Oh, all right.
Beth?
Yep.
Brett?
Yes.
Myself, yes, okay, unanimous, okay. Now, we'll go on to the public hearing for, uh, the amendment to lot four of the Uber subdivision, let's open that at 5:07 PM. This is a simple dividing of a lot into two, I, plenty board members are familiar with it, any questions? Any comments from the public? Okay, hearing none, I guess I'll close the public hearing. We close the public hearing at 5:07 PM. Uh, and now, um, we have a choice. We have a long meeting ahead of us, we don't need to make a decision on the, uh, finding of facts for the subdivision application, the amendment. So, I'll entertain a motion to table it until our November, November 9th meeting.
Is, is the applicant in agreement?
We have, we have time to, uh, ordinance allows us to, uh, we don't need to make a decision tonight, according to our ordinance.
It would be nice though, if you could decide tonight. It's a pretty straightforward application.
We also have a very long meeting ahead of us with something else. Is there a reason you have to have it done tonight?
Well, we're putting it up for sale, um, this might hold up the sale.
Plenty more members, any comments?
I feel sympathetic to the applicant, you know, we're, we're working on a major application, I know that. We hopefully can talk about additional time to deliberate, other than just tonight on that application. And for people who live in the community, we can't just keep putting them off and it's a simple, uh, simple matter like this, I know it's time consuming. But I think it's only fair to our residents that we address some of these if we can when they come in.
I mean, is there any problems with the application?
Well, that's all we determine through, determined through the findings of fact.
Could, could Jesse speak up to that?
I can just add that, what Mark is going off is that the ord, the ordinance allows you to make a decision within 30 days from the public hearing, so to Jeff's comment, no, the applicant wouldn't have to agree because we're not beyond that 30 days. Um, when you go beyond the 30 is when the board and the applicants need to agree on that statement. Uh, as to whether or not there's an issue with it, I don't looking at it for seeing issue, they've provided the information you asked for at the last meeting. Um, but you still have to go through all the findings at this meeting or at a future meeting.
For the record, I was not referring to this applicant agreeing with this, because I know we can adjourn, I was referring to the applicant for, Acacia Woods Lodge agreeing to more time if we lose, you know, can't get done tonight.
Well, that's a question we'll ask, and when we get to that.
You know, I look, I think 30 days from the public hearing is, is what the, uh, nothing requires us to move on as the same day that we have a public hearing. So I would, um, I would table this one and move on with the, uh, campground.
And, and certainly, it's my understanding you could put your property up for sale without having this done, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Brett, would you like to make a motion to that effect?
Sure, I'm moved that we table the application for subdivision approval till the next meeting and proceed with the Acacia Wilderness Lodge matter.
I'll second it. Motion is second on the table to table the findings of fact review for the subdivision application for lot four of the Uber subdivision until our next meeting. Any discussion?
I'll repeat my early comments, I think it's my fair to our residents that we can handle their matters when they come in and not be bogged down by this large application, put them off, it's a simple request and, and, uh, we should be able to address it.
We're not putting them off, Jeff, because we have 30 days for the public hearing to issue a decision, so I would argue we're not actually putting them off.
We heard from the applicant, they need it.
Well, so how about the folks from Acacia Wilderness Lodge, you know, I mean, it, you know, and this one's been pending for, I don't know, two years now, it feels like?
Not quite.
I mean, I'd like to get through this thing tonight, my goal is to get through this thing tonight, get it off our plate so we can do some other things, we've been on this too long.
Okay. Any more discussion? Otherwise, I'm going to call for a vote. Lawson?
You're calling for a vote, uh, my vote is yes, in favor of the motion.
Okay. Brett?
Yes.
Beth?
No.
Yes.
Did you pay Beth or Jeff?
Beth. Sorry, with a B, sorry. That was a yes, Beth?
Yes.
Okay, Jeff?
No.
Myself, yes. Four to one. Okay. Sorry to the applicant. Well, we have a long meeting ahead of us, and I'm sure you can work something out. Okay. We're going to have a public hearing on the Acacia Wilderness Lodge campground. Of course, this is only to discuss whether there's adequate groundwater supply. So please keep your comments to that. We set, Jesse and I set some time limits for both Amy Chow and for Andy Hamilton. Andy, you'll get seven minutes. Amy, you'll get seven. Andy will give you five to rebut. And members of the public will get three minutes each. And please, once again, keep your comments limited to that regarding adequate groundwater supply. So let's open the public hearing at 5:14 PM. Andy, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jesse, can you share a host so I can use share screen?
Yep.
Hold on one second. I forgot. Oh, thank Beth, you're going to need to recuse yourself, but you, you don't have to leave the table here. You can sit.
No, I recuse myself.
Okay, good. Thank you.
So thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the chair directed at the last meeting, the scope of the final element of the public hearing and materials to be presented are groundwater and water supply. We have present tonight on groundwater Greg Johnston and Arnie Fessenden. We have present if the board has questions, and the board made clear it was only if they have questions. Diane Morbeto is to traffic, Dave Moises to septic, Craig Johnston is to stormwater. Cynthia Orchid and me is the zoning considerations. We're fully prepared to address any final questions as the board conducts its final review. This is a project that has been pending for some time. Those are the dates. Tonight, we understand that the board only wants to hear responses to the groundwater and water supply issues. Mr. Johnston, you're up. Greg? Or Arnie?
How about that? You can hear me now, folks?
Yes.
So the concern was that runoff could affect the groundwater by directly draining to a wetland. So you can see that the parking area that could potentially drain to wetland, it really follows this well. And you see on the lower right of the slide that a 20 is going to flow to a 17 and a half before it flows to an 18. So related to groundwater, how runoff might affect the groundwater quality, that concern has been addressed. There was a concern that runoff could adversely affect the water bodies. There are no shoreline zoning water bodies on the property. The forest and wetlands do not invoke setbacks or wetlands of special significance. The concern that the applicant did not consider groundwater quality. I'd like to say that the applicants have committed to pretreatment as the best available technology such as Septic Tech or Oxy Pro for reducing strength of effluent. The utility plan shows several areas, tanks in place for the pretreatment of leach fields. Those are shown in front of the leach fields. We reserve those areas for placement of pretreatment and septic tanks. In order to evaluate instead of local standard of maintaining water quality, I will perform field samples and detailed on the ground reconnaissance to verify quality of soils, but also the geographic area available to meet EPA standards at the property lines. We've also completed quality testing on background contaminants. These contaminants are nitrogen nitrates, which might exist in the ground, which would tell us how other leach fields are performing here. We have background data that says while the houses on Kellytown Road, one side of the house is the well, the other side is the septic system. The setbacks recommended by the state are working. The background data has no nitrogen nitrates traceable in the samples we've taken around there, which is a good thing. This is why we've, we've stated a number of times that the 300-foot setback indicated on the plans from the state were established through testing and developing wellhead protection policy. This policy is based on conservative assumptions on the degradation of biological pollutants such as colt forms and nitrates in the environment. This is the very same standard applied when we worked with the Tremont Elementary School. And it can have a large leach field, but also have performed safely as having a public water supply on site. There's no difference. It's because the rules in place work. Through our experience and in particular on MDI, the drinking water standards are met generally within 150 and 250 feet of a leach field. Those are site-specific data and knowledge. We believe the 300-foot setbacks, which were verified on the ground, are very conservative. Lastly, related to groundwater quality, we're aware that we're going to be facing a state permit that require a term called transmissivity. That term is not in your ordinance. We have not submitted on that because it's like the hydrology question. But it's basically the evaluation of nitrogen nitrates as a migrate from a leach field to a property line. In preparation for that application, both our offices and FGS offices evaluated the site using mass balance and groundwater flux models. This work has given us the confidence we can meet the state submission requirements as well as the knowledge that the setback requirements pass. We look forward to that process with the state, which would be reviewed by an independent agent at state office, which contain the requirement for that smittle, but also possess the knowledge to rule and inform the local plumbing inspector. We may proceed to construction.
Greg?
Pass. Yes.
Could you, could you move to the next slide? We're down to three minutes.
This comment is that, yep, water supply. This comment, I guess, was we conservatively use the maximum allowable leach field capacity. We also included some gallons per day for leach, for irrigation. This demand was given to FGS as part of their analysis. They have concluded that there's 22,000 gallons compared to our potential site demand of 10,094. The question of why there's, why is the septic smaller than the demand and all that? You guys are going to understand, none of it goes into, we have a large landscape buffer that we have to maintain. We have to maintain its growth and can, and guarantee its survival. Next slide, please. I think that probably concludes. Yep, I think that concludes our claim, our stormwater, I mean, excuse me, our groundwater aspect of our presentation, unless Arnie wants to add anything that I've missed specific to groundwater and water supply this evening. Those are our comments.
Great. I don't hear anybody saying they want to add to what you said, Greg. Board, any questions for Greg? I have one. Greg, what happens when you say pretreatment? What does, what do you do to pre-treat the water?
There are, what they call a advanced treatment units such as Oxy Pro or Fuji Clean System. They're basically batch aeration plants in front of the leach fields that actually aerate the effluent, which reduces its biological demand before it even gets to the leach field. It's a state-accepted form of reducing the concentration of both nitrates, but also biological demand before it even reaches the site. It's a very effective way to mitigate groundwater quality concerns.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Let's move on to Amy then. Hi, Amy.
Hello. Can you all hear me?
Yes. Let me know when you're ready to start the time.
Okay, before we start, I'd like to try to share a screen also.
Okay.
So hopefully you won't count that against me. Bear with me. Can you all see that?
Yep. Are you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna shortly turn this over to Matt Reynolds from Drummond Environmental. But I would like to start by simply noting for the record that whatever it was that Greg Johnston flashed on the screen regarding evidence of groundwater, safe drinking water and groundwater concentrations at the property line has not, before this moment, been provided to the planning board and was not provided as part of the application. So we're seeing it for the first time. I'm going to ask Mr. Reynolds to comment on what was, what was viewed. But it is the first time that the applicant has in any manner addressed safe drinking water at the property boundary line. So I'm going, with that, I'm going to turn it over to, to Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you very much. Good evening, planning board. I just want to make a few comments with respect to groundwater and water supply. But starting with the groundwater, which is section N and the performance standards, as Amy noted and as quoted at the bottom, you need to make a finding that the look, that groundwater at the property line will comply with the safe drinking water established by the state of Maine. So what you have in front of you, what you have in the application is this figure here, the utility figure that shows the, the leach fields in blue and the 300-foot circles in, around them. On the property lines here are highlighted in pink. The applicant has said that the safe drinking water definition or is defined with, as being outside that 300-foot circle. And so using what you, what the applicant has submitted, you can, I don't believe you can find that that condition has been met because those 300-foot circles, particularly with two and three, but also with one, extend off the property lawn. So all the board has in front of it is the assertion or the, the information that says outside this 300-foot circle, the groundwater meets the standard, and yet it doesn't, clearly doesn't meet that. Those extend over the property lawn. Having said that, I don't believe that that 300-foot circle is being used appropriately, and I haven't seen it used anywhere else for any other subdivision ordinance. The 300-foot circle is a default standard that the drinking water program has developed to try to set back wells and public water supplies to leach fields as a default. What's much more common is to do a nitrate analysis, which was alluded to actually in the, in the first slide that Mr. Johnson put up, which would actually look at groundwater impacts from, from the leach fields on, on downgrading areas. And so it's a common analysis. Many towns have specify this sort of nitrate analysis, but that's not what the board has. The board only has this circle, and, and I don't quite know how you could find that based on what you have in front of you, you, that they would meet condition N. Secondly, with respect to the sewage disposal, the, the, again, first time tonight, and I've mentioned this in a number of comments about pretreatment, tonight is the first time that that's been acknowledged. It's not been part of the record. It's just been a question I've asked. It's something that the soils evaluator looked at or recommended strongly, but there was no representation from the project or a project engineer. The other thing that I pointed out in the, in my letter of most recent letter is that there's no, there's no information. These leach field systems are, are large. They're more than 2,000 gallons a day. 3,300 is what's being proposed. So in order to, to evaluate those, it requires by state regulations, both a licensed site evaluator, which voice is, and an engineer. And there's been no representation from an engineer of record on these, on these systems that they believe that they'll work. In particular, leach field one is right uphill from the yurts and on a slope such that it's possible without proper evaluation. There hasn't been a determination as to whether you can keep that water in the ground or whether there's some risk of it breaking out above the yurts on that slope. And so I think it's perfectly reasonable, if not to do the mounding and transmissivity analysis that would be required to have some kind of representation from the engineer that, that this system will work, both to keep the water in the ground, make it safer, the yurts, and also to, to find out whether this, this impact will extend offsite. So those are my two comments about the, about the wastewater system. Again, I, I find it difficult to navigate my way to a positive finding of effect with respect to the groundwater based on these 300-foot circles. There is, there was some additional information provided regarding water supply that included some additional information on the well offsite that was tested. As I've mentioned in my letter, that offsite well is, is not being proposed, at least to the best of my knowledge, for use on this property. And since each well is going to behave differently, then I don't think you can extrapolate too much from the offsite well with respect to how wells on this property will work. That's the extent of my comments. If there's any questions from the board, I'd be happy to discuss them.
And I see I have about 30 seconds. And Mr. Reynolds, did you have a comment also about the storage for the system of water supply?
Yes, the ordinance, the ordinance uses the language system of water supply. As I've noted in, in material that we've submitted, and I believe you've read, that if the wells don't supply the instantaneous demand when everybody gets up in the morning and wants to use water, the system of water supply will need to have some storage somewhere. But again, as, as with the pretreatment last minute, it came up tonight. No, there doesn't appear to be any, any provision for storage in the system, which, you know, may be necessary.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Mr. Chair, I just want, can I just simply note, this isn't, that, that.
We're beyond time.
On the issue of that there, that there may be people in the audience who will speak to the abutterers' concerns with respect to water supply. But, but the slide that was flashed on the screen regarding the nitrate analysis is something that we've seen for the first time, and I don't believe.
Ms. Cho, your seven minutes are up, and if you're trying to make a point, they could very quickly.
Okay, the point is, I would like to see the nitrate slide because it's the first time they've ever mentioned that. Anything about the property line, and there's no background evidence to support that now.
Okay, okay. Board, any questions on this presentation? I have one for Mr. Reynolds. You mentioned these 300-foot circles. And if I look at our ordinance, our site plan review ordinance, under end groundwater protection, I see nothing about the 300 feet.
That's correct. Your ordinance, your ordinance talks about safe drinking water at the property boundary. So as, as best I can understand, the applicant has used this 300-foot circle as a proxy to demonstrate to the board that outside of this 300-foot circle, you would have safe drinking water. Again, I'm not, I, I've not seen that approach before, but just taking that approach on its face value, then if those 300-foot circles go off of the property by, by inference, within those 300-foot circles are not safe drinking water, and so you don't have safe drinking water at the property boundary.
Okay, but wouldn't the main drinking water program be looking at this? Yes. Sure.
Excuse me?
I'm sorry, Chair, I think you were. I'm sorry, Chair, I think you were
Okay, what I, the question I asked was, would it this come under the auspices of the main drinking water program?
The, the, the main drinking water program will, will make sure that the, there's a 300 foot setback between the wells for this project and the septic systems for this project or, or offsite septic systems for that matter.
Right.
But, but the Tremont ordinance, so, but, but, but the Tremont ordinance requires you to make a finding of fact, if I understand it correctly, that this project won't have an impact to groundwater off of the property. So you, in addition to whatever the state might do, i- if I understand the ordinance, that you, the, the planning board needs to make that finding of fact based on the information that you have in here.
You, you are correct. We have to make that finding of fact. Yes. But our campground ordinance, I'm trying to find it right now, specifically says that any permit will not be issued until it complies with main drinking water. Just want to make that point. Anybody, anybody else have questions?
Yes, on this same issue, is there, is the applicant or anyone aware of where wells might be located on neighboring properties where these circles would encompass?
We, we have, and I've stated in the, the report that we, the reason why the soils in the areas past is we've done ground reconnaissance to validate. It's not just the soils validate within this region. There are no wells. That's what's survived on the ground to, to meet that these systems and their soils can meet the next step at the main drinking water program in DHHS.
Would, would this, would this hamper a, a butter from locating a new well within these circles?
Well, it depends on, it depends on whether it's a, a private well or a public water supply well. But, but a public water supply well couldn't go within those circles offsite.
I'd like to correct that statement, Jeffrey. The, the states end whether somebody could, could put one in there. They're allowed to put additional casing and gain setback differences from the state. So it doesn't prohibit anybody from putting something there. It may need to meet a different standard. It's often to add 16 feet of casing to add extra insurance. So the idea that would preclude somebody is not true because there are many standards that allow different installations of wells within these geographic areas. I don't think Matt Reynolds would argue with that.
Greg, do you know additional cases would increase the cost significantly?
Not necessarily.
He's trying to make it a condition of approval.
Yeah, Amy Chow and Helen Wright, you both got your mics open and you're interfering with the discussion tonight. Could you, could you mute your mics, please?
I just wanted to follow up on, it, it is possible to get a waiver to put a well within those circles that probably would include additional construction requirements, as Greg mentioned. The ordinance though, doesn't talk about safe drinking water at wells. The ordinance talks about safe drinking water at the property boundary. And, and that's not uncommon at all because the idea in most of these, and you know, this is not true just in Tremont, it's in true in most, most of, you know, most town ordinances. I, I believe that the, the concept is that if you maintain safe drinking water at the property boundary, then you're not having any impact one way or another on your neighbors. And so you don't require them to do anything different. And, and this, again, I don't think these 300 foot circles are necessarily the appropriate way to do that. But that's the only thing that's been submitted, are these 300 foot circles. So I would, you know, other towns use a nitrate analysis or another analysis that the applicant could do, but so, so, but the ordinance says property line, not, not existing wells, not future wells. And what you have in front of you is the 300 foot circles.
Okay. Chair, my, we have a chance to respond.
Generally, yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to ask if we could have an additional two minutes. And if we could have the opportunity to have Dave Moyes and Greg Johnston address this because Dave is on as to septic. Greg is on with Arnie as to groundwater. So can we share a screen again and have our time clock start once I've got the screen up?
You have five minutes. Hold on a second.
I'm sorry. Is this rebuttal or is this, I just, I'm trying to
I was trying to establish Mrs. Chow, Ms. Chow, sorry.
Apologies.
This is your five minute rebuttal, right, Andy?
That's, that's correct. We need to be able to screen share. So if the screen could be taken down, Ms. Chow, and if we could have the opportunity, there, go. Thanks, Jesse. I'll bring it up promptly, Mr. Chairman. So what I'd like to suggest is that these materials on groundwater
Your five minutes are starting now.
Yeah, these materials on groundwater and water supply are responsive to information that was peer reviewed. And I just want to say on water supply, you can see on the screen, it's Haley Ward's opinion that the applicant provided sufficient evidence for anticipated onsite demand of 10,024 gallons per day and sufficient evidence for onsite water supply of 22,093 gallons per day. So water supply, water capacity has not been challenged. What I think we want to do is address the water quality issues. I'm going to just pull up something that we've been looking at and working with. It's actually been in the materials. Ms. Chow said it's the first time they're seeing it, but this is from materials that were previously submitted. So Greg, if you and Dave, perhaps Dave first can speak to the concentric circles and why they're relevant and why standard N, which requires that the proposed site development and use must not adversely impact either the quality or quantity of water available to abutting properties or to public water supply systems. That's standard N. If you would address that, Dave and, and Greg briefly.
Sure. Now, these, these septic systems are going to be engineered, which means they're providing service for 2,000 gallons of, per day or more. The state plumbing code requires a 300 foot setback from any system that is 2,000 gallons a day or more. It also requires a 300 foot setback from any public well. What was mentioned earlier was kind of well inside that 300 foot setback. The answer is no, whether it's public well or any, any well. And the reason it protects both parties, both the abutters and the campground. It's, it doesn't matter whether it's a residential house and you're talking 100 foot setbacks. Someone by state regulation cannot put a well inside that 300 foot zone and therefore render that septic system no longer compliant. And vice versa, you can't put a septic system within 300 feet of a well. And now that well is, and the septic system is not in compliance. So it protects both sides. That's, this applies, whether you're talking about something like this or just an individual residential lot at 100 feet, you can't put a well inside that zone. Those 300 foot zones are strictly for, for wall head protection for both this project and for the abutters. It's a setback. By the state.
It's a wellhead protection setback and, and I'm just going to jump in there because I only have limited time, Dave. Also, you'll recognize here, the leach fields two and three are eight feet below the, of abutting properties. Okay? So leach field one, we're showing no wells within the 300 feet in the groundwater. The 300 foot setback is based on microbial action and testing on the states that reduces demands and potential pollutants within that area. That's why it's there. We know that by empirically on MBI, it's often less. But you also gotta recognize again, leach fields two, two and three are eight feet below the property. There are several test wells at the farm. There's a test well on the adjacent site in the neighboring property. We know that groundwater is following the topography. There's no question about that. So the idea that leach field one is going to flow, I mean, leach field two and three is going to flow uphill by eight feet. It, it's not a, a valid representation. What happens is that leach field one is 285 feet from the property line. Those, those rules were in place for a reason. It's exactly said before that when you follow the rules, the standard can be met. And, and we, we contested by meeting the setback rules in the groundwater wellhead protection area, the leach field and the pollutants can be contained.
I just wanted to follow up on two things that Matt Reynolds stated. First, he, he said that we had to do mounding and nitrate analysis. He cites the Bar Harbor Falmouth and Wells requirements that require hydrogeologic nitrate evaluation at the property line. That is not the standard. Standard N in your ordinance is that the proposed site development and use must not adversely impact either the quality or quantity of groundwater available. Haley Ward has reviewed all aspects of groundwater quality and quantity in accordance with the standards that were set forth as standards that you needed peer review on, and they found that the application meets your ordinance standards, not the Falmouth standards, not the Bar Harbor standards or the Wells standards, but the Tremont standards. So I think we've met our burden and what we're talking about is aspirational or speculative evidence and standards. And that's not the task. We have to meet the test that's set forth in the Tremont land use and site and review ordinance. And that's, that's, that's all for us.
Okay, great. Any questions, board members?
I, I, when I asked about abutters locating a well within the 300 foot circle the first time, I thought I heard that they could, and now I hear they can't. Did I miss something?
Who are you asking that question of?
Any one of the applicant engineers or so I, when I asked before, I thought my concern is the circles go across the boundary lines and would hamper a, a butter to be able to locate a new well in an area property because of something going on, on this property. And the first time I heard, I thought we're okay. And that's how I heard, I thought we're not okay. That a well can't be located within the radius of that 300 circle when it crosses over into a budding property. So I, I'm just looking for clarification.
For the applicant team, the Dave and, and Greg are the folks. And I think Greg, you were going to say, you want to screen share on what?
Well, the reality is, is the answer is yes. And it's the same. Remember young as your own leach field on your own property. If you have a leach field on your own property that is three bedrooms, nobody, even if you're against your butter, can put a well within 100 feet. So it's, it's no different than any other leach field. They need to meet setbacks regardless of property lines. That's the first thing. And the second thing, which I think we, we don't differ on is that the the state will allow setbacks based on it, what you're seeing here is depth of well casing, a liner below level and reductions in setbacks based on disposal field. So the answer is yes. It's a matter of a, a different condition. But it's not dissimilar than what people have to do every day adjacent to themselves.
Greg? Wouldn't it be easy just to, by a redesign of the campground a little bit to move that concern, that one circle that goes over the boundary within the boundaries of Acadia Wilderness itself? And if not, why not?
I would say that the soils drive your best availability for best treatment of waste. And so looking at where they can be is driven by the soils, not necessary setbacks. But I also wanted to know Mark, that those are the ones that are eight feet below the adjacent property.
And that's a significant why?
Because groundwater is following topography.
In other words, it's not going to flow uphill, right?
I didn't want to say it.
Yeah, okay.
Show me where the, where it actually crosses the, I've heard it crosses the boundary line, but I, I'm not seeing that. I, I see the cir- like a circle around the leach fields. And it go, to me, it goes to the setback line, not the boundary line, but maybe I'm missing something?
Can we put that back up again? Diagram?
Some utility plan, Andy.
Yeah, so LF2, LF3, they're boxes. And then there's a dotted gray line around it that touches upon the setback line. Where does anything cross the boundary line? What am I missing?
Look at the larger diameter circles that are around them. That's the wellhead protection area. That's defining an area where we would not want to draw groundwater from.
Oh. Oh, okay, okay. The big, big ones around. All right. Well, those are huge.
300 feet. That's, that's been my concern, Brett.
Well, then I guess, but look, I mean, I have a leach field, look, I mean, I have a leach field in my backyard. And if you were to draw a circle around that right now, then that means my neighbor couldn't move her well either. I mean, those were done at a point in time where things were set. And, you know, I mean, that's just something, you know, I think you get a plan for what's in the ground now. If someone's going to want to move their well in the future, that's going to be a problem for my neighbor as well because of where my leach field is.
Just quickly, I think I can clear it up.
Sure.
Mr. Reynolds, is that you?
I'm sorry, Mois Environmental. If you notice on the diagram, you see the, the circle on the bottom of the diagram. That circle is for an adjacent well. Actually, if you want to look at it that way, they're, they're keeping this project from putting a septic system.
Yeah, exactly.
Exact same situation. This is a state regulation. And as Greg said, doesn't matter whether you're talking about a private septic system or an engineered septic system. All of them have wellhead protections that know, no boundaries, if you will, as far as the property line goes. You cannot drill a well within 100 feet of a regular three bedroom house septic system and vice versa. And it's like that across the state domain. So then again, the property boundary is an issue, but that's why that was done on the bottom here. So that area here, that area there, they cannot put a septic system in that because it'll be within the wellhead of that a butter. It applies both ways.
It, but we're talking about 300 foot here, aren't we?
If it's an engineered septic system, even if their well is just a regular residential well, you cannot put an engineered septic system within 300 feet of that well. So that's why that's there.
Correct. Conservative, right, Dave?
Yes.
If a single dwelling house was being built on subject premises, would it be dealing with 100 foot radius or 300 foot radius?
That depends on if they shared the same leach field, Jeff. If we all brought it to one size for the leach field, like the school or potentially the town office, some of the larger leach fields, you could bring many of the subdivisions in town have joined leach fields. It's, it's based on the size of the leach field, not, not whether it's residential or not.
But if it's not a shared leach field, come back to my question, would be 100 foot radius or 300 foot radius?
Depends on the size of the leach field, Mark.
300 foot of the septic system on this project is 2,000 gallons a day or more.
And whether the well water supply is a public water supply.
So it is, does a normal single family home require 2,000 gallons a day?
No, 270 gallons a day, three bedroom house.
So the size of the wells, we have a larger circle to deal with.
Or septic.
Or septic, okay.
Both, both ways.
Okay, any more questions? Boston, is that you?
Yeah, it's me. And I'm sort of sticking with this theme, trying to get some clarity around the difference between, oh, I think it's the wellhead production zone, if I'm learning the language correctly. So that's the 300 feet. Is that because the groundwater within that zone has been adversely impacted? Oh, I guess that's a question for Dave.
No. That is just, that is the state main division of health engineering, regional environmental health, excuse me, I'm old time. Subsurface water program, the disposal rules require a 300 foot setback. It's just all it is, is a wellhead protection zone to provide protection. to provide protection, as Greg mentioned earlier, based on the studies that are available in the current science. We use a hundred foot for a regular residential home, three hundred foot for a public water supply or a septic system that is two thousand gallons a day or more. So either public water supply requires three hundred feet from it or a septic field of two thousand gallons a day or more, requires a three hundred foot setback from it for any type of wall.
I think I have understanding that advert, or sorry, the, the wellhead protection zone areas. That makes sense to me. So now let me ask, and I guess this is a question for Greg, but maybe Dale will chime in. Greg, have you determined what areas have are adversely impacted on the site? Uh, where is the water quality adversely impacted? What is the extent of that area?
Yeah, so um, we know that the three hundred foot area is, is safe and with uh, pre-treatment. It's generally gonna be reduced to the primary drinking water standards within two hundred and fifty feet. Based on not only data we've done elsewhere, but the pre look we've done at this. I mean, the town doesn't have a transmissivity study. We are prepping for the state. We can get a balanced review, um, but generally within two hundred and fifty feet. Based on the, the well data we have on site, we also have background data because you have to include the background nitrates that are in the ground for a total test. Again, we've taken tests up in around Kellytown to see what is the background nitrate. So um, generally within two hundred and fifty feet.
So I just wanna understand, Greg and Dave, based on number Wilson's question, he's asking, is this because groundwater or soils have been impacted, or is these protective measures to make sure they aren't impacted?
The second, the protective measures to help ensure that, that the well, any well in that area will not be contaminated. That's state regulations, three hundred feet. There's nothing magical about that. That's state regulation to, to help protect that area. There doesn't mean it's contaminated.
Sir Chairman, can I ask a, uh, just a point of order question?
Sure.
Uh, it seems like the planning board members uh, are asking a number of questions regarding this. Uh, and um, to the extent that they are questions that are, are broadly applicable to this issue of groundwater and water supply and sewage disposal, et cetera. We do have our engineer also who I believe is qualified to answer these questions. So it asks for an opportunity for him to respond also if there are general questions, not related, obviously to, you know, something that's on a plan and what the applicant meant.
Okay.
Ms. O'Connor? Is she around?
Here.
Diane, yes, hi. Uh, can you respond to Ms. Chow's request? Uh?
Well, it's really up to the planning board if you want to um, ask specific questions to a specific person.
Yeah, we'll ask who we wanna ask, you know, as far as.
Okay, sounds good to me. I, listening to this, it seems like some of these questions, maybe we should be asking as we go through the findings of fact. And instead get right to letting the public make their comments, but uh, I'm open to hearing from other planning board members.
I have a, a question that, looking at that lower circle, we were just discussing a few moments ago. Does that encompass the one point six acre lot that has eleven yurts part of this campground? Does it go through that lot? Is is the applicant there?
Yes.
Yeah.
My question would just question us, but.
Yeah, it wasn't clear.
Is there a well on the, on the new campground that has eleven yurts that was approved a couple of years ago?
Um, I guess I'd say there is a well there. Um, yeah, there is a well on that site. It's been approved by the state.
Okay. And and this circle, lower circle, I think one of those four properties there, but since they are identified, is the other campground. I think it's the second one over from the left. Looking at the survey.
The third, I think it's the one that has the road pointing toward to it.
Yes, that's the one I was referring to.
Oh, right. Second to the left, third to the right. You're at, yeah.
Yeah, that's, thank you. Yes. So is that circle going around the well that's already on that property?
No, what you're seeing is a um, a well protection head from a leach field on an adjoining pro- property. That's, that's something that's being imposed on us.
So low circles is not your part of your application. It's, it's what you're, you have to live around.
Yeah, we've lived around exactly, Mark, I mean, Jeff.
And so those, the wells that are placed are outside of the exclusion zone.
Correct.
You're correct.
Intentionally.
I would like to briefly, if I could, share a comment on one other thing that I, I did see about the storage, if I might. First of all, the, the idea that the pre-treatment, um, the pre-treatment.
I don't think anybody asked that question.
Um, I think we're, okay. I'm pretty much.
Somebody?
Yeah.
Ask that question, go ahead.
I like your idea, Mark, of opening it up to the public comment and um, and then as we circle back during the findings of fact, try to resolve this at that point.
Okay. Anybody have any objections to that? Doesn't sound like it. Let's move on then. Thank you, folks. Okay. We'll open up for uh, comments from the public. We're gonna give you each three minutes of peace. We'll stick the same format as the last time. We'll start with anybody who happens to be in a butter to the campground. Then a resident of uh, the town, including summer residents. And last, anybody who's not, uh, lives in another town, is not a resident of the town. And please keep your comments directed at the groundwater, that adequate supply of the ground or adequate groundwater supply. Okay. Jesse, I'll let you be the emcee and figure out uh, who goes first and who goes next, and I'll do the timing.
Okay, um, did you remind them to raise their hands? I missed it if you did.
Uh, yes, cuz you raise your hands as in symbolically raising your hands.
Okay, it looks like Cindy and Steve Lawson.
Folks, are you with us?
They're muted.
Must be muted.
Hi.
Hi.
So um, my understanding is that.
I'm gonna start your time now, okay?
Okay. So my understanding is that the state doesn't apply the safe drinking water standards at the property line. That's a provision of our ordinance in Tremont. So my question is for the board is that, don't you have to find in the findings of fact about that standard? Paragraph N of our ordinance says that applicants whose projects involve onsite sewage disposal systems with the capacity of two thousand gallons per day or greater must demonstrate that the groundwater at the property line will comply with safe drinking water standards. So I mean, it doesn't sound like that they've met the standard. Um, and then I also have a question about um, the twenty two thousand ninety-three gallons per day. Is this using the entire forty-two acre parcel? Um, or are they calculating that with the eighteen acres that are set aside for the campground phase of the development? Because if they're planning on putting a residential development on the retained open space in five years, my question is if, if that's the plan and they're using the forty-two acres, shouldn't they be calculating the gallons per day using the actual acreage that they're using now? Um, and then I also have noticed in reading some of the letters from other public members that there's been a lot of questions that have been left unanswered by members of the town, and I'm wondering if there will be opportunity to ask those or if the board is gonna be asking those questions for us. You know, things like the solar power that's been advertised, where's the plans for that? What's the maximum, maximum occupancy? We, we still haven't had those answers, and those questions have been asked many times, so.
Can, can I ask that we stay on topic? Because otherwise this will degrade into a discussion about more than groundwater.
I would also like to say that I don't think that respectfully, it seems like we've been bullied. The public shouldn't feel bullied into silence. If we have questions and concerns, we should be able to ask them. Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, thank you. Like, you know, Steve can have his three minutes too, if he wants.
I think we've said what we have to say.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, okay.
It, it does bring up the interesting. Mark?
Yes.
It does bring up the interesting point of the hundred plus letters or even more than that, um, that we see. There are a lot of questions. I think residents would like some answers to. And we have.
Let's wait till, we'll discuss that after the public hearing here. Let's let everybody have their say first, okay?
Well, I'm not sure if we close the public hearing and the board wants to hear more questions. Can we reopen the public hearing?
No, once the public hearing is closed, it's closed.
Mm-hmm.
This is their chance to, to uh, uh, tell us their concerns.
But.
I, I, honestly, I, I'm not sure what you're getting at here.
I'm getting at the, uh, the prior quite prior question asked by was about whether we're going to respond to some of the li- li- questions in the letters that come in. Been many questions in the letters come in. And will the residents get some satisfaction to answers of those?
I think through the process, they will get some of those answers, yes.
Through the process, I mean, we're gonna address individual questions or just gonna go through our process of.
Yeah, if you really think we're gonna give satisfaction with people for the questions they're asking, would you really think that?
I believe we should at least give them an opportunity.
I believe this process is designed to do that, and that's what we're doing right now.
We'll be addressing some of their questions. Certainly, we can't address everything, okay? They've had their chance. We've, we've listened to them. And that's what we're doing right now. Listening to them again, and we're taking everything in. Okay, let's move on. Next.
I don't have anybody else with a hand up at the moment.
That's it?
Only one person. I'll just point out to the public that if you wanna raise your hand, it's the reactions button on the bottom of your screen. Not everybody might know how to raise their hand. So you hit the reaction button, and then you have the option to raise hand, and that will put you to the top of the queue and let Jesse know that you're, wanna say something. So.
We've got some now, yes.
Yep, I have Rachel Corman Ramos is next.
Go ahead, Rachel. I'll start your time.
She's still muted.
Still muted.
So sorry. Um, hi, so I'm interested in the water issue about the discharge rate. Um, I think that there is an average discharge rate discussed it, discussed, sorry. So there's, you know, when there was discussion about um, how houses would recover. And my, my understanding is limited, but um, so for example, some houses have discharge rates to, you know, eight gallons or five gallons, all that kind of thing. I guess one of my questions is, if we have a house that finds that our, um, that we are impacted, once this is, this property was to go forward, and we found that um, our well was impacted, what would be our recourse? You know, wh- what can we expect we could do about the fact that all of a sudden our well was impacted? Um, so that is a huge concern that I have. And also, I would um, echo the issue of the fact that I don't think that there's a lot of questions that have been answered, and I do hear you saying that um, we will get some of our answers, our questions answered. But things like the fact of whether the campground is gonna serve alcohol is a huge concern to me. So that would impact traffic and danger and things like that. So I hope you will keep something like that um, in mind, and um, I do think a lot of those things haven't been answered and do need to be before the night is out or before any decisions are made, because those are huge concerns um, about the side of the island, and um, we do need those answers set to go. So um, I'd like some answers about that. I am a very close a butter. Um, and as far as how my well is impacted with drilling and um, it, it is a big concern. I'd like to know what the impacts would be, but also what my recourse would be when I do find that all of a sudden my well runs dry. Thank you.
Thank you. Who do we have next, Jesse? Jesse? Maybe no more.
Julia C.
Yeah.
Okay, are we still dealing with the butters now?
Yeah, I'm on a butter.
Okay, great.
Uh.
What, please state your name and get, get.
My name is Julia Cordoso. Uh, we're a butters on the west side of the property. Um, and I'm seriously concerned about the the issues that have been raised about groundwater quality because we are a butters and looking at the maps provided with the circles showing the three hundred feet. I'm fairly sure that where our well is, is if not in that area, at least very, very close to it. So between that and the fact that we're downhill from the campground, um, I know that we're talking about groundwater, but anyway, um, stormwater, groundwater, we don't, you know, would, I'm just concerned that there's not, um, the, sorry. That the applicants haven't really taken the right actions to meet the Tremont standards. They're using this three hundred feet radius uh, argument, but that doesn't seem to be what's in the town standards. About testing water quality at the property line and considering that we, we will be moving over there soon and we'll be drinking that water, I feel better if the applicants actually went through the process required by the, by the Tremont um, ordinance. So um, that was, that was my main concern, along with everything else that our, that the other citizens have brought up about other questions not being answered. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other butters? If not, we'll move on to residents. Anybody have their hand up?
Ruth Yizer.
Go ahead, Ruth.
I think you're muted.
So my name is Ruth Yizer, thirteen fifty-nine Tremont Road, Seal Cove, and I'd like to use my three minutes, and those are my husband Chuck, who is at this moment chairing a township meeting in our hometown of Lower Frederick. Tonight, we plan to tie the squishiness of the water report to the squishiness of the cafe, to the squishiness of the number of vehicle trips, to the squishiness of whether this project qualifies as light commercial. These items are inextricably tied together, and we hope that we will be allowed to demonstrate their links. First and foremost, squishy aspect of this plan is that we don't know the phase two maximum occupancy. For phase one, the AWL website advertises eleven yurts, some sleep six to eight, some sleep eight. Maximum occupancy for phase one is eighty-eight. The unknown phase two maximum occupancy has led to all sorts of squishiness, especially in the water calculations. Chuck used a mix of information from the AWL and Terramore websites and from AWL's September fourteenth submission to guest estimate that the phase two maximum occupancy is three hundred twenty-seven. Using that number with the latest USGS value of thirty-five gallons per person per day in Hancock County comes close to GF Johnson and Associates water usage value of nearly eleven thousand gallons per day. So we think three hundred and twenty-seven is in the ballpark for maximum occupancy. At phase one, we've got four hundred and fifteen people. In the water calculations, FGT asserted that the property had groundwater recharge capacity of just over twenty-two thousand gallons per day under drought conditions. Pushing aside that droughts often last longer than a year, and that this past summer must have been exceptional for groundwater recharge, there's a big giant aspiration with these calculations. FGT mistakenly uses the assumption that the project site is forty-two point seven acres. The revised project site is on less than twenty acres. The remaining twenty plus acres are not part of this project, and therefore that acreage can't be used in the groundwater recharge calculations. If one calculates the recharge based on the resort's actual eighteen plus acres, there are only nine thousand six hundred and twenty gallons available per day during drought conditions. Oops, according to their own calculations, the resort needs nearly eleven thousand gallons of flow per day. And then there are the appendix A site water demand estimates. The employee housing that sleeps eight requires four hundred gallons per day or fifty gallons per person. On the other hand, the yurts tents that also sleep eight or six or maybe five only require seventy-five gallons per day. For an eight-person yurt, that's less than ten gallons per person. An ultra-low flow shower head uses one point five gallons per minute. If everyone in the eight-person yurt takes a five-minute shower, they've used up sixty gallons of water. Will there be enough water to brush teeth, fill water bottles, or wash out the locks? Will there be enough water to brush teeth, fill water bottles, or wash out the lobster pot? Even if we assume 25 gallons per person, which is 10 gallons less than the Hancock County USGS per person numbers, the 55 yurts or tents alone would demand over 8,000 gallons per day. And then there's that 20 seat cafe and store that's supposed to significantly lessen the need for vehicle trips and cooking for the total 400 guests and staffers. The water demand for the cafe is only 140 gallons per day. Just one daily hot beverage for each guest and staffer would use up 25 of those gallons. And that doesn't include the water required for washing the mugs. And we sure are hoping that AWL is not planning on using disposable materials for either in-person dining or for takeout. A cafe that alleviates vehicle trips and cooking for 400 people will require much more than 140 gallons of water per day.
Man, you've gone over the three minutes.
I'm using my husband's time too because he's not here. Let's stay on that squishy cafe plans by comparing AWL to the AMC Echo Lake Camp on 102. I've had connections with the AMC camp for nearly 50 years. The maximum occupancy of the AMC camp is 90. Each day, three full meals are served to all the guests in the dining hall. The staff is made up of manager, assistant manager, chef, assistant chef, chef, and 10 crew members. They all live on site. Besides serving, preparing, and cleaning up, the crew kids maintain the grounds, keep the two communal bathrooms clean, and generally do whatever is needed to be hospitable. The crew kids work 50 plus hours per week, eat what the campers eat. The employee housing on the AWL concept plan in August was for 12, but for some reason it slipped down to eight on the submitted September plan. AWL will have four times as many guests and seems to be planning to operate with less than with less staff than the AMC camp. Was employee housing cut to reflect that there's less water than previously thought? Or do less employees make the place appear to be lighter commercial? Or maybe the number of employees required for such an operation is still squishy? In any case, it would be aspirational to think that eight staff members could run a cafe that serves 400, a spa, a store, and a dog kennel. Or maybe more employees will commute, which leads back to vehicle trip calculations. And while we're thinking about vehicle trips, let's compare again to the AMC camp. Besides the traffic, think daily big morning, early morning delivery trucks associated with feeding 90 people. On average, each family leaves the camp property at least three times a day. In the morning, it's difficult for one family member to go for a run or a bike ride while another goes to Southwest to pick up coffee before breakfast. After breakfast, virtually everyone leaves the camp to go for a hike. After lunch, a substantial number of people leave camp to visit more of MDI, and around four o'clock, a substantial number of people head to Southwest to pick up fixins for cocktail hour. And then after dinner, still more people head out for ice cream, movie, a lecture, or a sunset walk. And all this vehicle movement happens at a camp that includes three meals a day, a waterfront with swimming in boats, three hiking mountains within walking distance, organized nighttime activities, and decent coffee before breakfast. So anyone who argues that most of the 700 vehicle trips in the AWL traffic study are internal needs to revisit that argument. AWL will not be providing three meals a day. It's not on waterfront property, and there's no hiking within walking distance. Those 700 daily vehicle trips will be on Tremont Road. And as Chuck's calculations indicated in his written comment, those vehicle trips are four times what would one what one would expect from a residential subdivision on the same ground. At this point in the game, the water calculations are squishy. The function of the cafe is squishy. The expected vehicle traffic is squishy, and everything's squishy because the maximum maximum occupancy is a mystery. Before this plan can be approved, it needs to be firmed up, and protections need to be in place to keep it from chase from changing down the road and without of the governing body. We urge the planning commission planning board to get answers to the questions that have been raised concerning water, concerning the expected number of employees, concerning the function of the cafe, concerning vehicle traffic, and concerning the conflicts between state and local. Until the questions are answered and the requisite protective covenant is established with AWL. The planning board should hold off on making any decisions. Thank you for letting.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Yizer. I see the Edelman's have their hand up. You want to call on them next?
Yes, Bert Edelman has his hand up.
Yeah, hi, Jesse. Thank you. We hope everyone in your family is fine by now, by the way. My wife, Lydia Rogers, is next to me here. I'm taking both of our time. I'd like to revisit.
Start it now.
The comment about wells that that Rachel began. We were supplied by GF Johnson Associates with a page that listed, I think, 34 wells that are in the vicinity of the campground. I assume that's because these would be the wells at greatest risk from the impact of water flow to the campground. The although there's no specific scientific discussion about how to interpret the data they've already developed with respect to recharge rates at any of these wells, I would like to point out that they indicate that the average yield of wells on these in this area is eight gallons per minute. That's actually a very misleading calculation. There are 34 wells in this site. 22 of them actually have recharge rates or gallons per minute flow rates of less than five, and a number of them have less than one. The reason why they were able to get a average of eight is because there are a few wells that have extraordinary high rates, one, I think, 50, one 20, maybe 140. So I would like to, you know, with a little more data here, reiterate Rachel's question is, how does the person who's got a well of with a with a discharge, a reflow rate of one gallon per minute or four gallons per minute or 0.63 gallons per minute, how do they know that their wells will not be seriously affected when everybody at AWL wakes up and gets into the shower, runs their sinks, the cafeteria gets going? I just don't think that that's been addressed in any way, shape, or form. I'm not a water engineer, but it just I can tell you that the math here, you would not use a mean to actually answer the question from someone whose well is got a GP, you know, a gallons per minute rate of one. I would also like to reiterate the point that a number of people have made, which is many critical questions have been asked, which would help us determine whether or not we believe AWL meets the definition of light commercial. And the most critical issue is how many guests and others will be on the campsite? Because it's is 10, is 50, is 100, is 200, is 400 light commercial? I'm sure that all those numbers are not equally likely to predict what we in the town would consider to be light commercial. And I think one last point I would make is it was very confusing to me because it's with respect to the 300 foot zone versus a setback zone, because it appeared that AWS two expert gave us different answers, that Mr. Moyes said you absolutely cannot put a well antiseptic system within the 300 foot zone. Whereas Mr. Johnson seemed to feel that if the unfortunate individual who finds that he or she has to drill a well within the 300 foot zone, if they paid more to get more casing, they might get the state to approve it. So I think we still haven't heard the absolute answer to that. And I would thank you very much. I appreciate how difficult this has been for everyone. But we are certainly concerned about the town that we love dearly, and we want these things answered in the context of deciding whether it is appropriate to permit this application.
Does he have any time left, Mark?
He does. He actually has.
Okay.
Okay, yes, yes. It's you've used up three minutes and 40 seconds, so.
Oh, wow. Okay, so we do really appreciate. This has been a long process for everybody. I know there's a lot of frustrates frustration. And certainly for for all of us who are opposed to us opposed to the campground is a lot of frustration for us because it's always a moving target. Every time there's a new meeting, there are new maps, there are new plans, there are new details. The last one, I was shocked. Now we have dog kennels and dog washing. But this is really important. This is not a little deal. Not only is this the largest project that Tremont has has considered. It's going to affect everybody in the town, whether it's.
I appreciate the comment, but but you're supposed to keep just water. Yes, thank you.
But the and but I do think we really need to focus on all aspects. But most importantly, we need you to the planning board to define light commercial. If light commercial means this much water use, this many people, this bigger project. I mean, really, are you permitting a small hotel, maybe it's not so small hotel with 400 people all flushing toilets running having long showers?
Play the objection, Mr. Chairman.
Excuse me, Mr. Hamilton. I was speaking. I did not.
You don't need to interrupt. She has one minute left.
So this is, I really do think that the planning board, we would hope that you would represent the concerns of the people who live in the community. And that you would define, I know a lot of talk has been about light commercial. But in effect, I believe that you're going to be defining what the planning board means by light commercial. And we're all concerned about what is going to happen going ahead in the years to come. So thank you for listening, and thank you for all your work.
Thank you. Jesse?
Yep, I have Elizabeth Faulkner.
Elizabeth, do you you and Ed both plan to speak? I think you're muted.
Okay.
Okay, now we can talk.
Okay, are you each in the comments?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Three minutes each.
Okay. I'm gonna start it.
All right, I'll have the first one. Bert made many of the points that I wanted to. I was looking at the geological map that was provided with the wells, and I also noted that there were 34 wells and only seven of them, seven of those wells gave eight gallons or more. My concern is how many wells will they have to drill to provide enough water for the campground? If the wells turn out to be one gallon per minute or two gallons per minute as many of these wells in this area are. My own well on Kellytown Road is a half a gallon per minute. And this is not an uncommon thing. We have to be very careful with our water. So a concern is all of those people who are downstream with that same aquifer. If they turn on all their faucets at once in the campground, what's going to happen to all the neighbors? And I think that's a very real concern. I'd like to know what the town would do for the people in Tremont if they lost their water. Who's liable? How is it going to be fixed? Who pays for it? That is a major question. And I think the town needs to consider that before approving this application. And the the water also. Well, let me make another point that I wanted to make. My last train of thought here. I'll let Elizabeth have her part. Sorry.
And then he'll step in maybe. Okay. Um, I think the planning board is far from being complete in approving this very complex and ever-changing plan. It feels like a shell and pea game that you're looking at. I certainly have trouble with it. AWL one has grown from small cabins to large yurts that take more people. What's their water draw? And now they're in a questionable zone in those circles. How can the town of Tremont monitor AWL two's plan, which keeps me changing at every meeting? And what is their ultimate draw really going to be? How do you monitor and protect the potential drawdown on community wells? Everybody's talked about the amount of water that AWL has on their property, but there's nothing being talked about about what that draw is going to do on neighboring wells. And there certainly needs to be an effort by the planning board to make sure that the neighbors are kept safe. The state standards require that everyone within one mile is considered in a butter. And that all those people may be at risk for well drawdown. We don't know. Maybe it'll have no effect. Maybe it will dry their wells. And now we're finding out that those circles on the map may be pollutants so that the the border of butters may have can end up with contaminated wells or the inability to drill a new well. The community has a right to water. They write have the right to know that their wells are safe. And that when the project, which is going to draw over 12,000 gallons per day, the largest decision that you have as a planning board. You know, you've got to know that you're not jeopardizing the community. Not only is everyone off Kellytown Road at risk for water loss, the water aquifer flow through the campground is going to affect people on the other side of the campground downhill as well. And you have to make sure that they have water and that it's safe. There are approximately 88 properties when it within a fifth of a miles distance from the proposed campground. Mark, do you know how many residents there are within one mile? I think you need to think about that as a planning board. And make sure that the community is protected and that the health and safety of this community is a priority as you consider new growth and development. AWL is not like commercial. It does not blend into the community. And it is inserting itself into and taking over.
Do I have a minute left, Mark?
You barely have a minute. I'll give you a minute. You have.
Because I remembered what I was going to say. I lost my train of thought there. I want to go back to those circles that we saw earlier. Because that was confusing to me. I I heard two different answers by the same people. And the one circle that went down into the the camp, the campground that's being built right now. I heard them say that that the circle, you couldn't put a well on their campground property because that was for a septic on the other property. But then I heard later that it was the circle was around a well on that property. So I don't know what the answer was. There were two different answers for the same people. And I think it's unfair for anyone to have not be able to drill a second well on their property if their first one should fail simply because somebody else put a septic system too close to their line. I think that would be very unfortunate.
Okay. Thanks, Ed. Okay. Jesse, we have anybody else?
Seraphina.
Hi, everybody. Again, thank you so much for all your hard work. Jesse, I hope you're feeling better, too. Sorry to hear.
Thank you.
So a lot of this is going way over my head as an English major. So when we get into water calculations and such, but a couple of things that came up tonight that I'd still like to learn more about. So first of all, the water at the property line, as I understand it, does not meet the drinking water standards. That's my one concern. And then where in the application does it show that pre-treatment? That was something else that came up tonight that I don't recall seeing in the application. I feel like there is, again, just to echo what Cindy said earlier. I feel like there are a lot of unanswered questions, and I'm learning more again tonight. Seems every time we meet, there are new things that we need to react to, and I feel like, you know, in the beginning, we were talking about the application process and, you know, the applicant, the burden is on the applicant. But in fact, I feel it's been more so on us as of late. So those are my questions pertaining to water. And then I think you already know my questions pertaining to the traffic and other things, but there are still so many questions that have gone unanswered, and I'm hoping that we'll have the opportunity to ask this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I assumed you were done, right?
I am done. I'm just.
I didn't want to cut you off. You still have time remaining, so.
Yeah.
Josh Perlswig is up next.
Hey, thank you very much. You know, there's I'll be brief because there have been so many thoughtful comments that have covered so much. But there is a lot that is confusing in this presentation tonight. And I will repeat this this one point that they have not met is drinking water standard at property line. The 300 foot standard that they're showing has nothing to do with the property line standard that's in the Tremont ordinance. And they're trying to confuse the planning board with this proxy standard. And they're trying to confuse the planning board with this proxy standard. So that's, that's seems pretty, as confusing as it was, that seems pretty clear. And it's not out of character for the application because this acreage is skewing numbers, right? Is it forty-two acres? Is it twenty acres that they're gonna do their calculations on? That whole.
Topic, please.
All right. But it's, they haven't met that standard. We've heard many reasons to deny the application. And here's, here's another good one. So, thank you.
Thanks. What do you think, Jesse? Anybody else?
Not at this time. I don't see anybody else.
Okay, last call. Okay. We'll call the public hearing to close at six thirty-four PM.
Mr. Chair, I have a procedural question at some point. I don't want to interrupt, but.
Okay, go right ahead.
So.
I have one as well.
I'm sure.
Before the planning board talks about what the next steps are, since you've closed the public hearing, I have heard that a number of letters, several letters, several dozens of letters have come in. And I just want to inquire whether they were provided to the planning board members. And if the planning board members have them, they should be made part of the record. And so I'm just, just confirming that they are, that they have been provided to the planning board. The planning board has considered them and they're part of the record.
Any, anyone that came in within the timeframe that was set has been included in the record. And I'm, I'm sure we've all read them all. I know I have.
Can I ask, which, I just, just when you say the timeframe set, I haven't heard that you've closed the record, which is a different thing than closing the public hearing. Obviously, people have written letters before the public hearing started and that's part of the record. So I would assume also that, that any letters that have come in since the last public hearing on the twelfth of October also have been considered and provided to the board.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Andy, did you have something?
My question, Mr. Chairman, is whether the board would like to entertain some responses to the claims and questions that were raised or whether you would just want to proceed to close the public hearing and then if you had questions of the applicant, as every planning board name does, you could ask questions of the applicant either way.
Just to comment on questions of the applicant, I may be a little bit confused about what Andy is suggesting, but if the public hearing, I agree, first of all, with Andy that I think the planning board was going to reserve, if it had questions of the experts here and, and Mr. Hamilton has made his folks available. I also, Mr. Reynolds from Drummond Environmental is available, as is Mark Bergeron from TRC, who has provided, both of them have provided two reports. So if the planning board has questions before the public hearing is closed, we offer that. If you are, if you are proposing to move.
Ms. Chow, the public hearing has been closed.
Okay. So if you're preparing to move into deliberations, I would ask that both parties be given an opportunity to present closing remarks and that once you are in deliberations, I don't believe that, that, that the applicant has any greater right to speak. I think it's the planning board has to deliberate amongst itself.
I believe we're allowed to ask questions, aren't we? Of both your experts and the applicants.
During deliberations? Okay.
Well, what during our consideration of the findings of fact?
Right.
Right, Jesse?
Yes, the board.
Does council agree? Our council?
If the board have questions or they want clarifications, then yes, they can ask. They can ask questions of the applicant or the opponents.
Yep. Andy, you did say something before we move on here. What?
Generally, an applicant has the opportunity to respond to public comments, but I was leaving it to the chair and the board's discretion. If you want to hear our responses, we have some very brief responses. There's a two-page chart of materials that I have. I just want to show it briefly to the board and give you our responses. And I think, unlike Ms. Chow's assertions, applicants are generally entitled to have the opportunity. We have the burden, so we go first and last. We're just asking for the opportunity to go last. We'll be very, we'll be very brief, maybe two minutes.
Mr. Chair, I believe he's already had his rebuttal.
I'd like to hear it, actually. If I could hear it, I think it'd be helpful for me. Ms. O'Connor? You have an opinion on that?
Sorry, what was the specific question?
Andy wants two minutes to do a rebuttal to the public comments.
Yeah, so.
Brett Witham said I'd like to hear it because all the comments were opposing and they raised some good points. So I'd like to hear the applicant's response to those comments.
Yeah, so I, I wouldn't consider it a rebuttal because they're asking questions, so. And they, they have also pointed out that they'd like answers. So if the board are at the discretion of the board, if they want to hear those answers, then yes, they certainly can ask the applicant to provide those answers.
I'll do so briefly, Mr. Chair, if it's acceptable. And I'll ask Jesse if I can have the opportunity to share a screen. We'll do it very, very promptly.
Mark? Yes. You know, it's been raised by numerous of the public about not hearing some answers and I think Brett says it would be helpful to him, but might be helpful, more importantly, to the public to hear their answers. And, and so I, I don't have any objection to giving them two or three minutes to go through responding some because I think they raise some very legitimate concerns and I, I want to hear the answers like Brett and I think so does the public. Okay, Andy, you think you can do it in two minutes or do you need three?
I had two to three minutes. I'll try to be as brief as I can, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Okay. Let me know when you're ready. Share a screen.
Sorry for the delay. I'm almost there. So I'm ready, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Go, Andy.
So there have been a number of comments and we've just generally grouped these under the concerned Tremont residents. There, there was a letter that was provided just the other day that confused the land use ordinance use classifications and you've heard that continuing confusion tonight. As a bedrock tentative ordinance interpretation, the more specific defined use categories given precedence over an undefined use category. The defined campground use controls over the undefined light commercial use. Your ordinance also salutes this concept of the more restrictive provision controls. When ordinance defines a term, that defined meaning must be applied. Additionally, if a term is specifically defined in an ordinance, we will not redefine it. You note, if you would, planning board, that the campground term is a defined use. The term light commercial is not defined. It was given a third definition from the legal insiders. Whereas your ordinance requires that the planning board, if it's going to look to a definition, look to Merriam-Webster's dictionary. The next item is about safe drinking water and there's been a number of statements tonight. We just say summarily and we're happy to provide details on this. This has been addressed by both the applicant's technical team and Haley Ward. Haley Ward's peer review is favorable to AWL and concluded that the standard was met. The next one is that safe and healthful condition standard, and there's a number of folks who talked about cycling and, and, and also pedestrian activity. This has been addressed by the applicant's technical team and Haley Ward. The Haley Ward peer review on traffic is favorable to AWL and concluded the standard was met. The concerned residents contend that adequate water supply is, is not met. This has been addressed by both applicant's technical team and Haley Ward. Haley Ward peer review on water supplies favorable to AWL and concluded that the standard was met. The reason you get an objective peer review is that you don't have to take the word of the opponent's team or the applicant's team. You get a peer review and you've done that on the next one as well. On-site sewage disposal standard. This has been addressed by both the applicant's technical team and Haley Ward. The Haley Ward peer review on sewage, sewage disposals favor to, favorable to AWL and concluded the standard was met. The next one is that the farmhouse accessory use to the campground does not meet the fifty-foot setback. This has been raised in a couple of meetings. We just want to make clear that farmhouse was built in eighteen eighty-seven and under your ordinance, structures of grandfather, they were established before May nineteen ninety-four. Further, the May fifth, twenty twenty-one ordinance amendment imposes a fifty-foot setback. There is this assertion that the campground constitutes a common scheme of development. That's a SLOTA issue and your ordinance is clear that the board will issue decisions conditioned upon other permitting authorities, whether it be the drinking water program on water, whether it be a D P as to when any SLOTA permit is required. The next one is that there are cooking facilities in units such that they're residential dwelling units. There are no cooking facilities. And the case of Seabran LLC versus Town of Naples says the cooking facility has to be contained within the residential unit. We don't have any of those. The outdoor fire pits are not a cooking facility contained in a tent. Generally, the offsite impacts have been minimized as a result of the design that was shared with the neighborhood at the July two thousand twenty-one meeting. It reduced the number of units from one fifty-four to only fifty-five units. We feel that we have both scaled the project, employed professionals who know their craft and, and their profession and they've addressed.
Let me just stop you for a minute, Andy. You've gone on for almost four minutes, but if other board members want you to continue, I'm okay with that.
I'm complete, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, that's it?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Sir Chairman, point of order. I, I, I thought, I, I think what Mr. Hamilton did was something in the nature of a, you know, closing argument. I would be asked to be given a similar amount of time to do that. But I, but I also just want to note that I think the, the reason for his presentation, I thought, was to answer questions that members of the public have asked continually here that have not been answered. And I thought the planning board members wanted to hear them, such as maximum occupancy, serve, serving liquor. There are a number of questions that are out there. I thought he was going to be responsive to those, but I don't, I have not heard that.
There, there's any number of questions that will be and can be answered as we proceed this evening. I was trying to hit the high notes and.
And that's why I, that's the way I was looking at it, that we're gonna get answers to some of those questions as we proceed.
Again, a point of order. If we're moving into considering findings of fact, no new evidence can be considered. So if now Andy gets up and says the maximum occupancy is three hundred and fifty, that's not evidence that has come into the record at this point.
Ms. Chow was back. Let the board do their work. We, we need to stop interrupting.
Wow.
With all due respect, Andy has been allowed time to do a closing argument. And I would also like to, for the record, mention that I submitted a letter yesterday, October twenty-fifth, to the planning board chair. I would like to note that if it has been provided to the planning board, I would ask that it be provided to the planning board at this point, now that the public hearing is closed. It's simply a one and a half page letter highlighting the salient points on which we don't believe the applicant has met its burden. And I would ask, be asked, I would ask to have a similar courtesy to get four minutes to, to address those issues that are highlighted and also ensure that that letter, which is in the nature of legal argument, be included in the record. It's simply, I've never been at a hearing where, where a letter like that or a communication to the board on a project this big that has this many standards addressed would not be made part of the record. So I would ask that be made part of the record and I be given a similar opportunity to address some high points.
Mr. Chairman, I, I must say that the letter came in. The letter is what I just responded to, as well as other questions that were posed tonight. Ms. Chow is asking to have her cake and eat it too, and she's the opponent. We're the applicant. Due process, the law court has held, is for the applicant primarily. And I think the, the neighbors, concerned Tremont residents, their council have had ample opportunities at now three public hearings. It's time to bring to a close the back and forth and we're happy to address any questions the planning board may have. But really, I, I think just because you have an opponent's counsel who keeps asking and asking and asking doesn't mean that this applicant should be treated differently than any other applicant before you. It's, it's too much.
Mr. Chair, there has been back, but there hasn't been forth. I'm simply asking for the same four-minute opportunity. You know, Mark. Closing statement.
Yeah. Let me just offer this. What's interesting here to me, and I'm curious what, what Diane thinks is, you know, these are not adversarial proceedings. It's not what they're designed to be. You mean, this is a, this is an application for, for a permit. And it's a public hearing, but it's not an administrative hearing. And what's happened to this entire thing is it's turned into a court case before the planning board, which is really not appropriate. Really, we ought to be driving the process and not the, not the applicants and the opponents. And what's happened here is it's turning into an administrative, a full-blown legal administrative hearing before a planning board. And it's just not appropriate. I, I don't know what Diane thinks, but that's what, that's what's happening. Mark, any other board members want to comment on that, Jeff?
Mark, Andy said that he did address some of the, I, I think it's a little weird that Andy addressed some of the points in this letter that Ms. Chow is referring to. And we haven't seen the letter and she hasn't been able to express the contents of it, yet the applicant responded to points in it. And that's sort of a strange position that we're in. I think we need to.
I, I received a copy of the letter. I don't know whether it was distributed or not. Jesse?
No, I was waiting for your opinion. We discussed where it came in after the deadline you had set. And I didn't hear any decision on whether or not distributing it to the board is what you wanted to do.
No, I'm sorry. I mean, even without seeing the letter, every single point I just saw were, they were raised earlier this evening, but they're all things that were just raised verbal is this evening. So I'm, I don't have any objection to, to making that letter a part of the record from my perspective because we've all, we've, we all just heard it.
I, I also have no objection at this juncture if the letter comes into the record, but I don't want further back and forth between council. I think it is time for the board to be able to finish.
Jesse, would you be able to email us during this meeting a copy of the letter? If it's going to go on the record, I think we're supposed to see it.
Yep.
Yeah. Thank you. I could even go through some of it right here, although Andy did touch on some of it. Well, maybe Jesse can shoot it out to us when we take a four-minute, five-minute break so we can each read it. I don't like something coming to record. I haven't had enough opportunity to see. Oh. That's a great idea. I think it's a great idea. If you can send it to us, Jesse, maybe we could take a break till seven o'clock and just let everyone kind of read it and take a breath.
Yeah.
And Mr. Chair, before we do that, I think that makes good sense. I would appreciate a break myself. But I continue to ask simply for the same courtesy that Mr. Hamilton has been given. And that is a four-minute opportunity to sum up after what has been a, a, a public hearing that addresses many standards. Four minutes is all I ask for. I think I'm entitled. And I think it'd be a due process. It'd be an unfortunate due process violation not to provide. I'll be quiet.
I, I withdrew my objection to the letter. I, I still object to continuation of argument. If we take a break, I think it should go to the planning board next so that you can, you can have your proceeding. Um, council arguing back and forth is getting tedious in my opinion.
Diane. What do you think?
My recollection was that the each we at the beginning of the last meeting, we said that each the applicant and the opponent. Would have the opportunity to do a summary and that the applicant would have the final rebuttal on that. I I think that we've only had heard from the applicant, a summary, and we haven't heard from the opponents. Do agree that the applicant should be given the opportunity to have the last say.
Right, right. Okay. I do recall that, so we're gonna go and take a uh six minute or so break. Till seven o'clock. And um we'll allow Ms. Chow four minutes and then we'll allow Andy. Two and a half to respond. How's that sound, Andy?
That should be more than enough. Thank you.
Okay.
Jesse, you're sending it out?
Just went.
Thank you. Is Jesse, I got it. Thank you.
I'm ready when you are out. I guess I'll hit start.
Okay, I'll hit start. Okay.
Um, good evening, members of the planning board. I too want to thank each and every one of you for all of the hard work that you have put into this. I know it's a lot and probably a reflection of how complex and big this project is. Um, and and the number of standards that you need to show. Uh, and make a positive finding had been met here tonight. Uh, and I have tried to put into um a short document. The salient points upon which I don't believe the applicant has met its burden. To show that they can make a positive finding on these standards and I won't go through each one. But I simply want to mention with respect to light commercial. That the light commercial, the planning board has the authority to determine whether a use is allowed in this particular zone. And although campgrounds are a use and a specific use that's defined. It doesn't mean that light commercial, even though it's not defined, is not a standard to which you must adhere and the planning board needs to do that. Even if it's not defined, you can use a common sense definition. If a bed and breakfast isn't allowed, then with more than four rooms. In this zone, then neither should a fifty five unit or when you combine it with the eleven unit campground, a sixty six unit campground. When you look at the intensity of uses that would result. Um, I would ask you to look at Chuck Yizer's analysis of a comparison between a residential development of a twenty unit subdivision. And the four hundred percent increase in traffic volume and maximum maximum occupancy. But the what I really want to focus on in 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 my remaining time is the one standard. That there is no shred of evidence in the record that the applicant has met here. The public hearing is now closed. And it's section nine N. And a nine N. States and and Andy mentioned the first part of nine N, which is quantity and quality of groundwater. But it states that applicants whose projects involve onsite water supply or sewage disposal systems with a capacity of two thousand gallons per day or greater. That's this one. Must demonstrate that the groundwater at the property line will comply following development with the standards for safe drinking water as established by the state of Maine. Now, all of this has been confusing because the applicant applied the wrong standard. And in fact, the standard that you'll find in Jesse's proposed findings is also the wrong standard. It's confusing. I understand. But what you what the planning board needs to um to do. Is conclude. On the basis of the fact that they have, the only evidence in the record is this three hundred foot circle standard. Um, even even if that were the appropriate standard, which it is not. Um, they don't meet that standard. What they need to have done is show that the groundwater at the property line. Needs safe drinking water standards. The most common way to do that, Mister rounds from Drummond Environmental said. Is to do a nitrate analysis. They've not done a study of that. They have not, they they have not done any study of that and you have in a butter down gradient. With steep slopes from Leachfield one going down gradient onto her property. Who is concerned that a well on her property may be contaminated. The reason for this standard is not whether um the leach field is a safe distance from an existing well. The reason for the standard is so that a property owner, when a new development comes into their neighborhood, can be assured they can put a well at their property boundary line. And be assured that there isn't groundwater contamination. That's the standard in your ordinance and there's not a shred of evidence in this. Um, in this record that the applicant has met that um that standard. So on that basis alone, we believe you should deny uh this application tonight.
Thank you. Okay, Andy. Two and a half minutes. Andy.
I need I need to ask the indulgence of the chair so I can just get the the screen um back up here. One second.
Sure.
Okay. Ready?
Yep.
So there's been a lot said about light commercial. I I've I've already indicated why light commercial is not the standard for a campground. The definition of campground is the more specifically defined use. The law court has said in several cases, that's what you apply. Ms. Chow's argument that you apply your common sense is not the rules of the game. The rules of the game for ordinance application are clear. What we said on traffic i- in two parts is that the submissions in January and September both identified route one oh two is the main entrance for both campgrounds. Leaving the Kelly Town Road entrances emergency element. Both campgrounds are part of the Sewell Traffic Study. That was pure viewed by Haley Ward. They said the applicant provided adequate information to satisfy ordinance requirements pertaining to traffic. Further, we've addressed the issues associated with cyclists and pedestrians. We do not have a high crash location. Anywhere within the point five seven mile segment that goes by the site during the most re- uh recent three year period. Now let's back up if we can. I don't know if my machine will allow me. Sorry. This will be two seconds. Um, let's go back to this um water supply groundwater quality claim. Look, the the bottom line is in my thirty five years of environmental law practice, I've never seen a claim that an ordinance standard designed to say. That a development can't cause um uh groundwater quality issues for an abutter is designed to protect. And a butter's right to put a well in a given location. That's not how the standard works. We have to show no adverse impact of quality or quantity of the butter's groundwater. We've done that. We also will have to show it in the context of a nitrate analysis, not required by ordinance. By some other municipal ordinances like Falmouth and Bar Harbor, we'll have to show it when we get into the state proceeding. And Mister J- uh Johnston and Mister Mois were very clear, this standard will be met. There's no evidence in the record that there's any groundwater. Quality issue whatsoever at the property boundaries, nor will there be because of the very conservative three hundred foot setback requirements that have to be followed. That's all I have to say. We're happy to work with the board. We do thank the board for its attention and its engagement. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any questions, board members?
Questions? Well, I guess we should talk about procedure because I I I sort of, you know, a list of questions that I consider threshold questions. Before we get into specific items under each one of the sections, we have to find whether they met the standard or not.
I would agree that we should ask some questions before getting into the findings of fact, yes.
Okay.
But also that we should uh. Think about discussing relevant ones within the findings of fact to save time, but yeah. What it other laws and Brett, you okay with that?
Yeah, it seems like if if there are questions that are specific to various. Paragraph or chapter, you know, uh. Within the ordinance, we'll talk about those when we get to those paragraphs. But if there are things that are sort of broader or. Don't really fit into an established. Paragraph uh, you know, section, I think I agree with Jeff. It makes sense to sort of have those conversations now, although. I think it's also okay if we get to the end and still have other questions that don't really fit in for like. Or reserve the right to ask follow up questions when we get to the bottom of it and say, oh, well, we never really talked about. I don't know what, something um if we feel like we still need to, but.
Okay. I want to say something before we start. Because uh I know we've been asked to. Respond to or or ask how we would respond to the public comments. And I just want to say on behalf of the board, you know, I want to thank everybody for, you know, caring about their community, our community. And I can assure them that uh you all that we do take those comments very seriously. And as valid as many of those are. As valid as they all are, we need to consider them in light of the ordinance. Of our ordinances and uh, you know, with some comments, it's it's easy. For instance. I remember one comment in a letter and I think was stated one of the public hearings about traffic passing by someone's house in another town. Well, that's easy because our ordinance doesn't deal with that. We heard tonight about wine or I mean wine alcohol being served at the cafe. At the campground. Our ordinance doesn't deal with that. That's something for the uh state liquor license. Our ordinance doesn't deal with that, that's something for the state liquor licensing, licensing board. But there are other issues that, you know, are much more difficult, and that's what we're going to try to get through here tonight. You know, it's been a long process. And along this whole way, you know, besides all the work we've been doing as a board. We've, you know, we've sought. The input of, you know, legal counsel. And, you know, peer review from an engineer, so, you know, we have a lot to draw on, it's difficult, but. I want to say one more thing, I know a lot of us was urging, a lot of people were urging us to not rush into making a decision. But we're up against a timeframe here, we have to either make a decision tonight unless. The applicant agrees to allow us to have more time. Are they going to do that? Andy, are you?
Where we've used a lot of resource in the last several months, I really give credit to my advocate on the other side. She used a lot of resource and we would like to be complete tonight if at all possible.
Okay, I didn't answer the question.
The, 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 the short answer is please, could you finish tonight?
And if we can't?
Why don't we get to that point when we cross, let's cross that bridge.
Right, right. And, okay. So what do you want to discuss first, board? What questions you have?
I'm perfectly willing to start, I have a number of questions to our council to give us some guidance as to various little issues out there. With that, okay?
Okay with me?
Diana, you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Hi. When do some of the state regulations on land use come into play versus our ordinances? Are they applicable? If there's a conflict, which one do we follow?
So under, you know, under main law, the local municipalities are given quite wide home rule authority. At least it's preempted by state law. And there are some specific statutes which do preempt it, for example, subdivision. If the town are looking at a subdivision application, their, their own ordinance has to be at least as restrictive as the state. It can be more restrictive, but they're kind of stuck with going with what the state says. Site plan review comes outside of the subdivision, it deals with applications that are not a subdivision application. And so the state doesn't apply unless it specifically says, see that does or preempts it.
So if state law defines a dwelling unit different than we do, specifically under section four, four, zero, one.
Title thirty-eight. I think if you look at that, Jeff, you'll find that that applies to subdivisions. Isn't that correct, Ms. O'Connor?
Is that?
I believe that that is within the subdivision statute, but I'd have to look at that. It's in the definition section, I believe, of that particular chapter. But generally, unless it preamps the home rule authority, I don't think there's anything in that particular section that would specify that that would control. If, if, and the general rule is that if there is two conflicting, if the state preempts it, the state controls. But like I said, I believe that relates to subdivision, which this particular application does not.
We, we heard earlier on during previous meetings, discussion of the site location law. What triggers that? And if it is triggered, where does it come into our process?
Well, the ordinance specifies that any, anything that's granted by the planning board is still going to be subject to any state. For federal approval that's required. So it's really conditional upon making sure that the applicant obtains any other type of permitting. So for example, if it did have to go through that particular site development law. Be a project may end up being a different project and they couldn't, if that, if that was the case, they would have to come back to the planning board to request amendment to the approval.
Why is the twenty acres that's been argued such a triggering point?
Says I'm not, I don't have the exact answer for that, I believe that that's the requirement under the state location law. I'm not positive.
So if the, if the property, if the campground is greater than twenty acres. Do they have to go to the state first?
I believe they have to go first, that's why the ordinance makes it conditional. So if, if they do have to go and get that type of review and planning, then that's what they'll have to do. It's like putting the cart before the horse. I think it gives the, you know, the purpose of that is to give an applicant the opportunity first to see if it's going to be approved by the town before they go through. More expensive permitting process.
And that's whether it's above or below twenty acres?
I believe, well, that's the case, I mean, if it's below twenty acres, they wouldn't have to go through the site location process.
Can I ask a question since we're on this topic and it's not necessarily of Diane? There's, because there's been some. Some of the public comment involved this saying that they think that. As proposed by AWL. The campground is actually, and both campgrounds are actually greater than twenty acres. And their, their figures, I think, are just under twenty acres. But I'm going to ask this of Greg and Andy. I, you know, I don't see a survey line dividing where the campground ends. And the reserved property begins.
Mr. Chairman, we're happy to accept a condition that would require that we establish. A survey line between the two projects. We've been relatively agnostic, we really don't care whether we have to go get a site location and development act review. As attorney O'Connell has said, it's the applicant's choice as to whether we configure the project. Considering as attorney Chow has argued and, and Mr. Bergeron has suggested that if we need to include the existing. Acreage of the existing development and we would stay below twenty acres if we don't want to have to go get site location and development act review. We think it's more likely than not that we may have to, but we've made a commitment to the neighbors. To the planning board, to the town of Tremont, that we would have at least twenty acres reserved in the backland. That may not prevent us from having to go to DEP. But how and when we go to DEP is not something that the opponents or the board or the towns can require. It's something that we'll have to do under state law if we exceed the regulatory thresholds. Three acres of excavated and unrevegetated area, twenty acres of total land area. And we, we have, just, just, just to address a, a comment that attorney Chow and Mr. Bergeron have made. We have included, both in the traffic engineering review and in the land use analysis. We've included the other project as a possible component of common scheme. So we're not excluding that from a conservative analysis. But we're, we're happy, Mr. Chairman, if the board wants to impose a condition that we actually show that as a survey line. And that we have at least twenty acres of reserve, of reserved land that won't be developed for five years. And that will never be devoted to campground. If that's a, a, a condition or a suggestion of the board, we're happy to comply with that.
Okay, that's would have been my question, thank you very much, Jeff, go ahead.
Does the applicant, Andy, do you realize if you just do twenty acres, then your campground is by the acreage on your, your survey would be twenty-two point seven acres? Does that trigger for you that you have to go get site location approval process?
Yeah, we, 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 we've looked at this carefully and Mr. Johnson and I have reviewed and reviewed and reviewed, we've talked to DEP staff. And, and we think that we will get a final advisory ruling shortly as to whether we have to come in. And as part of that advisory ruling, we'll have to state the facts for the agency. So that they can give a, a clean opinion as to whether we require site location and development attribute. We think it's, it's as likely as not that we will need site location and development attribute. But that has not been established yet because we wanted to frankly get through this, this process and then get into the, the state reviews. And as Mr. Moise and Mr. Johnson have stated, we've also got water reviews that we have to do as well. So this is, this is not the final review, that's, that's clear, and it may include site location development attribute. Mr. Young, thank you.
So I spent a little time practicing my high school geometry over the weekend. And if you remember the survey you submitted. I did very crude calculations in several different ways. But if I bring, do the, if I treat this as a rectangle, which it nearly is, I'll come back to that. If I treat this as a rectangle and I come down to this point, which I call the instep of the shoe. And go straight across, which already encroaches quite a ways into your campground area up at that section. This area comes out to in a very generous calculation, twenty point seven acres. So to set carve out twenty acres in the back would require giving up a fair amount, what you've proposed to have camp sites on. Before you answer. My concern is that you're, the filing is, and I have this off the top of my head. It may be a little bit off, but it shows campground eighteen point four acres, eighteen point two acres and shows the back areas twenty-five acres. If that's what's presented to the state, that's inaccurate, it is inaccurate. It's just plain wrong and shouldn't go to the state for them to make a determination as to whether they want to get involved.
So I have ethical standards, I have to meet Mr. Young, as you know, as a practicing, a former practicing attorney. I'm not going to present something to the state that's inaccurate, but I would say your baseline assumption is what's critical. You use assumed geometry. Mr. Johnston has looked at any number of division lines. And what he's determined is it depends upon the angle of, of, of that division line between the back and the front. That determines whether or not we're below twenty up front and above twenty up back. I will agree with you, it is somewhat of a zero sum game and at some point we're going to have to determine exactly where that boundary is. But we have committed in this process that we will have at least twenty acres of backland, it may need to be more. And I believe that we'll need to do exactly what you suggest, Mr. Young, which is to be certain of what the acreage is. And final survey is likely to have to be done in order to do that. Because I, 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 I think we're proceeding in an area where we know we're going to be watched. We've got, again, very capable counsel and very capable experts on the other side that will watch. So we're, we're not going to make a foolish mistake, we will be careful to draw a proper division line. And we'll represent to the planning board that if we have to go get site location and development act approval. A condition of your approval will say that we have to get any necessary state approvals, any necessary federal approvals. And so we're, we're happy to make sure that we draw the proper line when we request an advisory then from the main DEP. But we've already started into that process, as Mr. Johnson said. We had an obligation to contact the agencies and put them on notice that we're proceeding. With any number of regulatory reviews as part of this project, and so we'll have to do that. So I just don't, I don't want to stipulate tonight that it doesn't matter what line you use, you're always going to be above twenty or you're always going to be below twenty. We, we've stipulated that at the back acreage is going to have to be at least twenty acres. And we place that out of bounds for five years and we place it out of bounds permanently in terms of ever having a campground on the back twenty acres.
My point is after doing a very generous calculation on. In favor of the size of the back, and I mean really generous by taking the longest lines of the ends of the rectangle. To get twenty acres is going to change the configuration that what you present is what the campground is going to look like. Because going, it's going to go into the northern section of it by quite a bit.
So, so.
Jeff, Andy, can you hold on a second, Jeff? Wouldn't the condition of requiring a survey solve what you're talking about?
Yeah, but, but, but the problem is with the acreage reflected in their, their own filings way off of the front lot and the back lot. That concerns me, that's, you know, someone brought the word squishy, it's, it's a big squishy. It's there, one is eighteen, the other is twenty-five or some twenty-four, that's not even close to what it is. It's almost reversed, it's almost like someone made an error and reversed those numbers.
So are you saying, Jeff, that they filed false information with the planning board?
I don't like to use the word false, I say what they file, apply with us may not be correct.
Well, I think it's, I think that's, that's the question, do you think they filed false information with the planning board?
I don't want to use the word false because that's accusatory, I'm saying there may have been an error made. And that what we have in front of us is not correct.
That's based on your, I mean, are you a surveyor? I'm not, I, I wouldn't trust myself to, to do those calculations. I rely on, as a board, we rely on the engineers and whatnot that present us with that information. So I don't know, where are you going with this?
I want to be sure we have, looking at tonight, it reflects somewhat of what we're going to approve or not approve. And the acreage is so far off, in my opinion, from very simple calculations, it doesn't take much breadth. To, to demonstrate it and, and the. It, it makes a difference how state law comes into play and how we look at this. And we may prove something that's going to have to change old, you said earlier tonight you want to get this over with tonight. But they may be back before us again if the state requires all sorts of changes to it, different than what we've approved.
That's fine, the state will do their thing. We know that, I mean, every single application that comes before us is conditioned on state approval.
I still don't understand why requiring a survey to be done as a condition of approval doesn't solve the problem.
Well, I, I don't have a problem as long as we state what we want that survey to reflect.
But.
If it reflects. How big is the campground, how big is the land behind us? If it reflects the size of the two and. What's going to be the end product that we can make as a condition?
Well, yeah, but it just seems like the. What Jeff's sort of calculation seemed to indicate is that it's impossible to have the twenty acres reserved and the developed land as drawn. If Jeff's right, then a survey will come back and. Say that either we have to shrink the twenty acres of reserved land down to, I don't know what it ends up being, seventy, nineteen. Or we got to change the layout of the campground. Either of those, I feel like would be, like, those are changes to the proposal, that's not what the applicant has suggested or says, has proposed. So that seemed like that would be a conflict that would like not. We would find that complete at that stage or whatever like that would be. But if the survey confirms that the applicant does have twenty acres reserved and doesn't have to change the development. And I guess sort of. Best case scenario is that Jeff's math was wrong, which, no offense, Jeff, but like, that would be, you know. I'm sure, you know, like, or, or there's something about the survey or I, I don't know how that discrepancy gets. But if a licensed surveyor tells us, yep, like there, we can save twenty acres over here and. Keep the, you know, the rest of it as drawn and it works, then I think, I, I think we're there. It does seem like an important condition because it feels like that's a significant part of the application. And I don't think I would approve it without. With that condition.
Can I address this just briefly?
I would love to hear from Greg, yeah.
Chair, good? Sorry, I was muted, yes, certainly, Greg.
So I just want to add the little bit of clarity to it, so there's forty-two point seven acres. And reserving twenty allows twenty-two acres to the development. Now, when we talk about site law. We've also had to consider the common scheme of the adjacent lots. So whether it's a lot line or an area reserved for development. Out of the balance of forty-two point seven acres. You can get twenty acres reserved for. Not developed for a certain period of time, and it doesn't necessarily have to be a lot line. It could be an area that just says reserved, it could be an easement, it could be a conveyance and, and why I suggest that is that. You have a survey on page thirty that shows forty-two point seven acres. And so the area generally around the cabins, yurts and the tents. Is around eighteen point two, eighteen point three acres. Is around eighteen point two, eighteen point three acres. That leaves the balance of the site.
Nonsense.
Two point seven there. And so all we've committed to is that 20 acres of undeveloped area can remain. That's easy to, easy to find that at forty two point seven, but the confusion arises that we are also including. In our 20 acre threshold, whether we meet site law or, or required to do it. Is in that 20 acres. So um, we've committed to, to going to D E P and if we've shown evidence of that. Um, and you know, I'm not concerned about the site law. It is another procedure. Site law has a, got a process that is very technical. Um. It has a lot of the standards that you've heard from the C T R group, um, but also just want to. Site law applies to Hammond lumber in Town Hill. Um, site law also approved 113 campgrounds in Surrey. So. Um, I'm just saying they have a, a different level of standard. I think it's a, a, a good chance to have a, a, an even independent review. And I think if you look at the survey, the forty two point seven. It's easy to draw a circle around our yurts and keep 20 acres remaining.
I'm sorry, Spike, can we move on?
Yep. I also just didn't want to insinuate there wasn't a survey and if, if I wanted to point that out, that was there.
No, I was using your survey. I was using your survey. You didn't have to point it out.
You may have a second query there, Jeff.
Oh, God, no. Um, Diane, Diane. What's the role of the comprehensive plan language play in our decision process? We hear a lot about that in a lot of the letters. And again, the state law talks about is something we consider in, in a statutory uh provision. You know, we look at all things. Can we look at the comprehensive plan and consider our process?
Comprehensive plan doesn't have specific standards that the applicant has to meet. Um, but if it can provide some light on any um, you know. Questions that you have regarding interpretation or other things. It's part of the town scheme of um. Ordinances and things to look at. Um. But the ordinance itself is going to take precedence over what's in the comprehensive plan.
I'm, I'm sorry. Would you repeat that? And you dropped off.
Yep. The, the ordinance language itself is going to take um precedence over the actual comprehensive plan. Because the um, the ordinance has the standards in it and the plan, it's not specific standards for each application.
But, but if it comes to some of these terms that uh, let's just say like light commercial. Um, and, and if the comprehensive plan makes reference to it in some way. Can we uh incorporate that in our, in our help to define what we believe light commercial is or is not?
Well, like I said, you can look at the comprehensive plan guidance, but you've also got to look at the ordinance that you're looking at as a whole as well. And when you go to look at the light um commercial aspect, that's a, that's not an actual standard that the applicant has to prove. And the ordinance has a, a number of different um. Criteria and standards in that particular zone, what's allowed and what's not allowed. Um, so you need to kind of look at it all as a whole. But yes, you can look at the comprehensive plan if you're looking for guidance.
Jeff, if I uh, I'm looking at the comprehensive plan and, and I looked at it earlier today to double check. It says, and it does say in order to reduce conflicts between residential and commercial uses. It does recognize that there is a conflict. But what it says is strengthen, strengthen the buffering and setback standards for this zone based on the intensity of the use. And uh. Uh. It also says. It doesn't ever say light commercial anywhere that I could find. In here, it does say. Uh, I'm trying to find it now. Um. It does talk about. And also it says that even. Manufact the housing parks, trailer parks should be allowed in the residential business zone.
You, you broke up in all that.
Uh, um, I, I said that it even says that in the residential business zone. Trailer parks. Manufactured housing parks would be allowed. So there's no mention of light commercial that I.
I was using, I was using like commercial. I happen to know that I read the same stuff this weekend. I, I know it wasn't there. I was using it as an example. But in that regard, there is referenced about trimming back where like commercial, where it's an R B zone would be. And this. For instance, this property wouldn't be included in there anymore. It, if, if the town had adopted. What the comprehensive plan was suggesting at that time.
Which it didn't.
Right.
And that is, and if it had, maybe we wouldn't be dealing with this situation now.
Right. But it gives us some insight to what was being thought about when um, they were looking at activities.
But I think what Diane's pointed is not reflected in the actual standards in the ordinance.
Correct. But when you get to a gray area, we could turn to that to help us out of the gray area.
Uh, another thing that my aid you is um generally. Whatever standards you're applying, they have to be ascertainable for the applicant. Um, because there, there has to be, you know, an applicant needs to know what it has to present and what it has to prove when it comes before. The planning board. So sometimes um, some standards have been struck down by the law court of main because they're too vague. Um, they leave too much open or interpretational to subjective. So you sort of need to keep that in mind as well that, you know, the, that, that's what's going to be looked at as well.
You're muted, Mark.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah. Any more questions for Diane, Jeff?
Not this juncture.
Okay. I have a question for uh the applicants. Did you tell us at the last meeting that uh you're okay with no public access to the facilities? No public use of the, the swimming area cafe, fitness center?
Yes, and we have a proposed uh condition language if you want to look at that. Um, but yes, um, we're, we're okay with that. We. We, we want the opportunity as, as every applicant does, that if at a future day, the public has an outcry that they want to be able to use these facilities. We can come back before you modify that condition, but we're prepared to propose a condition on that.
Because it really makes our job much more difficult in terms of parking and things like that. Uh, and, and. You say in this letter, or at least James and Kenya say in this letter. We will not have any trails and picnic tables within the approximately 20 acres of land. The north of Acadia Wilderness Lodge, the reserved land. It is our commitment that the undevelopment land will be maintained as open space without any trails or picnic areas as detailed below. So. Are you saying that there'll be no use of that area by the campers at all? And if so, how are you going to keep them from crossing the line?
One of the reasons I like Mr. Johnston's earlier observation that there's already survey of the perimeter boundaries is I think there's probably going to need to be a boundary. Identified. And as Mr. Johnston said last time, I think. And Greg, you might want to confirm, we could use small signs. I've seen. Land trusts use very small signs on posts to make it clear. Uh, you need, need to stay out of the area. So is, 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 was that the essence of it last time, Greg? As I recall?
We spoke about that in relation to the 20 acres, but also towards the buffer areas. Um, mainly in, within the campground, alerting anybody where they may be approaching the buffers we've committed to. That was the only difference between what you said and what I recall last discussion.
Thanks. Lawson, Brett, any questions?
Nope. Doctor Rick.
I have two more.
I have some more too, but go ahead, Jeff.
Um, Diana, sorry to put you on the spot. You get the big bucks. Diane, there's been some conversations. We can't talk about the setback on the. Farmhouse. So there's the issue about whether May 5th applies or not. That's one question I have. But more important question is. There's a discussion at the farmhouse with grandfather. But the grand, farmhouse's grandfather as a residence, and now it's being changed use. To a non-resident facility. They're putting a cafe in there. They're putting. A store in there and they're putting some offices in there. It's no longer residential. Does a resident, does grandfathering apply to a building that gets changed use on?
Well, the, the setbacks apply to the building itself, which is separate from the use. So change of use, you know, is a whole different criteria, but that doesn't change the grandfathering of the actual structure itself. Um, and from, um, if the structure existed before the ordinance was enacted. And it doesn't comply with some of the setbacks, then it would um generally be considered to be grandfathered. Um, if the structure itself was changing and expanding or moving, you know, that's more relevant, but the change of use itself. Um, the, it, it, a change of use, if it's a grand, if the current use was non-conforming. And it was a non-conforming use. And then they were changing the use, they would have to um go through a certain procedure for that. Um, but I don't believe that its current use is non-conforming. So that's not really the issue. Um.
And the current, the current use of the residence is, is grandfathered, but I was saying if it changes the use, so it's no longer non-residence. Does it get grandfathered for protection?
So the grandfathering only applies to something that's non-conforming. So being used as a residence is conforming, right? That's allowed. So the, the, so it's, that, the grandfathering doesn't relate to its use. The grandfathering relates to the structure itself and where it's placed on the lot, if it's. Non-conforming to the current setback. That's where the grandfathering is.
That goes back to the first part of my question about the applica, application of May 5th ordinance changes. And that would require 50 foot setback. Uh, for a, a uh. Commercial use. And you're changing it from resident to commercial and we have a change in May 5th. Does it get grandfathered through that process?
My opinion is yes.
Things away.
Right. Because the change of use is independent from where the structure is and the grandfathering of the setback.
I, I had to look at this specifically, Jeff, so I'm happy to answer your question as well. It's consistent.
I never thought I'd say this, Andy, but I'd love to hear from you.
Okay. So, so pages nine and 10 of your land use ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
Um, page 10 in particular says structures that existed on May 1994, certainly an 1887 structure exists. In their current form may convert to any use permitted by this section without regard to lot line. Setback requirements provided the buffering standards are met. And I believe Greg and Cynthia, we meet the buffering standard. Okay.
Thank you. I missed that this weekend.
No worries. There's a lot to cover.
Can I be heard on that issue?
Sure.
Okay. Uh, the buffering standard actually has not been met. Um, because the buffering um of your land use ordinance. Requires a complete visual screening of the activity on the lot.
And any building.
And any building, the, the business use, including all, all buildings and parking areas shall be enclosed. By perimeter of landscape buffering. So I don't believe the buffering standard has been met.
We're, we're, we're meeting the buffering standard um that is addressed in the land use ordinance. Um, what Amy's referring to is a recent um amendment. And there's two concepts of protection of existing rights that are important to the applicant. One is non-conforming structure, and I've cited the provision on page 10. The second is. Um, the board has already determined that the modification uh did not change the pending proceeding nature of this. Since this application was filed. So. We're, we're protected from any buffering standard we can't meet. What I was referring to is we're meeting buffering standards uh that, that, that we can. And so I didn't want to suggest I was taking a hyper technical approach. With a non-conforming structure, but we're also protected by the fact that we're pending proceeding. And that the board can't change, only a court could change that. And I'm, I'm sure if. If Attorney Chow continues through the appellate process, we may get to that, but. I don't think that's something that really addresses the board's review. So. I just wanted to give the citation of the ordinance and the fact that we are pending proceeding and. I'm sorry if I set up a dynamic. We're, we're having a back and forth again.
I think I asked for that one. Uh, one last question, Diane, if I may. When in our review process do we determine whether subdivision review is necessary?
Well, I would have thought they would have been at right at the beginning when the, you know, application was filed, the completeness. Um, but as you go through the review, of course, you're going to be addressing the lot standards under the um, under both ordinances, but specifically the land use ordinance in that um zone.
We, we, we'll go through a lot of the facts of determining whether these. Buildings are accessory uses and, and yada, yada, whether there's more than one principal use on the property, if there's three. Um, do we, all these uh possible determinations would then flip it into subdivision and. Would, would that be correct? If we find that there's three different. Uh, principal uses, which are subdivision ordinance says would become as. A subject to subdivision, we flip it, can move into that at that time?
Um, you don't, I don't think you so much flip it into subdivision, then it wouldn't meet the lot standard. So it wouldn't meet the application requirements.
Okay. So they'd have to come back and we make that termination. They agree with us. They'd have to come back with a new application on the subdivision.
Correct. Well, if you deny it after assuming they don't appeal and they want to, then that would be correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, I have a question for the applicant. Uh, it was mentioned several times about the advertising of the. Campground as uh, on a website. Is there going to be solar power? Are there any solar arrays planned for this project? Because there's nothing indicated on the plans.
So we have a very green client. I'm happy that we do. Um, solar has been thought of. But we have shared with the applicant that it is a very involved process to do solar. So I think that's the aspiration of the applicant, but it's not the current plan. We have a lot more work to do before we could do that. So we will be careful to make sure we align the website um with the development project and make sure we're coherent. With local, state and federal approvals and requirements associated with those. But it's early yet, in my opinion, to be talking about solar.
So the answer is no at this.
We, we may need to reconcile it. No, at this point, but, but we have aspirations.
I'm sure you do. Um. I think um. Several people mentioned in uh the letters. As well as I think Ms. Chow even mentioned this somewhere. Um. That there are grills on the deck. Now, I don't see any grills on the deck. Is it, you only have the uh, uh, smokeless fireplaces. Away from the building. Is that correct?
That's my understanding. Greg or Cynthia may want to detail that further because they're closer to the design. Greg or Cynthia?
Um, Mark, this is Cynthia Orket. I think you will see the drawings in the application show that there is a fire pit. Uh, adjacent to the deck on grade. But not on the deck.
That was.
Never intended, never intended to be on the deck.
Nothing on the deck. Okay. Um.
Wait a minute, Jeff. Wait a minute. The application specifically says. That they're looking at um solo stoves or similar suitable for grilling. And that's right in their application. And being a proud owner of a solo stove, I know you can get a grill top for it. And so it can be easily converted for modest dollars to a grill. That's number one. Number two, there's a reference in the, in their application that the. Yurts um may have the grill on their deck, even though the diagram doesn't show it. It is mentioned in the. Uh, some of the language in their application. Either or ground level. On the, on the ones that are raised, that will put on the deck and some would be on ground level.
So I, I would support Cynthia's uh understanding of the design because she worked very hard with Kenya. Um, as part of the uh response to neighbor comments, I think back in April. When we came back in July, the. When we came back in July, the solos were part of the design, and it's always been my understanding, those are a grade. The important distinction is none of these units are ever going to be within. The the residential um um occupancy uh of of the yurts or tents, that that's verboten. And so under the law court precedent, uh, in order to meet the three-part test. Sleeping, cooking and wastewater disposal facilities, you have to have all three in order to have a residential dwelling unit. Uh, will 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 be clear, and my suggestion to Greg and Cynthia is. I think we can live with any condition that says there are no solos that are to be placed inside the units. Uh, nor on the decks, but clarify again Cynthia if you would.
I think that condition would be appropriate to say that all fire pits will be on grade adjacent to a deck.
And no, and no cooking facilities within the structure itself.
What do you mean by that?
Uh, that's correct, there there can be no cooking facilities within the the residential occupancy, yep, so we agree.
Okay, I'm gonna.
One other question then on this very subject is a coffee pot, which usually has a hot plate. Coffee maker, is that a cooking device? It's mentioned it will be in the tents and yurts. That is a cooking device.
Um, I've done a lot of code enforcement on the island um and represented applicants on the island, I don't view a coffee or cocoa. Maker as a a cooking facility, and I've got several code officers that would agree with me on that, but. Um, there's always the opportunity to make new law, Mr. Young. Microwave is much different, that that is a cooking facility, and I will say that there have been efforts to have pots and pans. Uh, on wood stoves, I view those as cooking facilities and we've taken that position in Mount Desert, um, so.
Si- since we're discussing this, uh, Ms. Chow, I don't want uh leave you out of this. One of your arguments is that these are residential dwelling units. State your case, please. Briefly, as brief as possible.
I'll try to be brief, uh, uh, it is correct that uh that a residential dwelling unit needs these three things, cooking facilities. Toilet facilities and sleeping facilities, cooking facilities are defined, uh, maybe defined differently under different ordinances. Um, and a cooking facility could include, for example, microwaves, rice cookers. Things of that nature within the unit. Um, and cooking facilities and and in um, in some cases are also defined as having refrigerators. And um kitchen sinks. Um, and so the idea of whether you need fire to actually um warm something. To be a cooking facility, I think is is open to debate, and so I I think by the design of this. Um, we clearly have a cooking facility, if not within the actual year. We have an area set up um for cooking.
We would just use C brand. Uh, LC versus Town of Naples, a case earlier cited by. Um, Ms. Chow as the defining standard, and it says you have to have cooking facilities. There's an extensive discussion in C brand as to what cooking facilities are, they're not a sink, you you could use sink or. Um, the the ability to brush your teeth, um, just because you've got a sink doesn't mean you've got a cooking facility, so.
I I have to agree with that, Andy, though I think uh Ms. Chow in her argument was referring to the sole descending uh uh justice, correct?
Correct, that is, that is absolutely correct, yep.
Yeah.
So I I anticipate some of the residents in this town may be moving their. Getting cooked stoves outside of wood-fired ovens and and putting their their uh ovens in the in a uh. Their barn or garage, then call the assessors, I don't have a residence anymore, please lower my assessment. I just point that out that, you know, it could happen very easily.
Going back to C brand there, twenty-one C brand for a second, in the dissenting vote, Justice Alexander. Actually said uh addressed that it was a lack of any firm commitment. To never add a provision for cooking or and eating to the structure. It that allowed him to make that dissenting opinion, so if we make this a a. Uh, to me, that's making it sound like if they would have made it a condition like, I'm guessing we're going to plan to do in this case. That he would have been okay and not descended.
I I think that's right, and I think that's why we've we've said um in response to any questions you've had. Where you've got reasonable conditioning authority. That we will, we will work with the board to make sure that the parameters that the neighbors have sought, wherever we can. Uh, feasibly do that, we will do that, so we'll we'll be reasonable in the condition framing. Um, um, uh, approach, um, I agree, Mr. Chairman.
So with respect to C brand, Mr. Chair. If you uh address conditions of approval, that if I'm understanding correctly, you're prepared to say. No microwaves, no pots and pans, uh, no single burner stoves. Uh, no rice cookers, no instant pots, nothing of that nature. Uh. And you have fifty-five units and a twenty-seat cafe. That is supposed to service all of these people with a maximum occupancy that still hasn't been disclosed. And eight employees. How is it that people are going to have all of their eating needs met without having to drive off-site? And I think that issue.
We're into the area of legal arguments, um, and I can do that too, but I I think we should be responsive to questions from the board.
We are arguing the law, we're arguing the C brand case.
Sorry, I brought it up. Applicants. Ms. Chow just mentioned maximum occupancy, and uh that was a concern of some of the people we heard from. Uh, in their public comments, can you address that? Please.
So we've not proposed an occupancy limit, um, but we can understand the questions associated with the occupancy. I I'd like to have time this evening to think about that, um, and as the planning board goes through this. Let's mark this one down as one we need to come back to, preliminarily, I'd ask Ms. Orket to think about. How we would begin to uh calculate a reasonable occupancy limit. Because I understand the nature of the question, it does bear on some issues. Um, and um, if Ms. More Vito is also on, um, we might ask her to think about how. That informed for her traffic generation numbers, um, so I think. Occupancy is 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 a challenging one, there's no standard. That requires that we do it, but I can see how it bears on some of your review standards, so we'll endeavor to work through that with you this evening. Ms. Orket.
Are you asking her to reply?
Yes, yes, please. Yeah, you're muted Cynthia, and I'm just looking for general parameters, not a final answer, because I think final answer is difficult, but we'll we'll keep working through it.
Okay, it would seem to me parameters for um coming up with occupancy. Um, are basically looking at beds. Um. Because that's how many people can sleep in the yurts and the tents, numbers of employees. Um, because at this point, we are committing that the fitness center and the cafe and the farmhouse are not open to the public, that does not give us. Um, additional occupancy numbers, so that is how I would go about um calculating occupancy. And it does tie into parking as well.
So what what do you think um Cynthia could be involved in estimating? And um what we'll have to do is be conferring with our client, um. Zoom presents opportunities, but also presents challenges, but we'll work through those challenges this evening with the board, so. Um, the the number of uh tents and the number of yurts, can you give us that breakdown again Cynthia?
Sure, um, the number of tents is thirty-seven, and those are all um one-bedroom. They have a a um. Because a queen size bed, it might be a king size, but that's two per tent. Um, we then have five yurts um that are single bedroom, so again, that's two per yurt. And then there are thirteen yurts that have two bedrooms, so that could be four. Um, in each of those bedrooms, and then we have um employee housing for eight. Potentially additional employees, um, as I think was brought up by uh Mrs. Yester. The eight are just how many are housed on site, so those would be the general parameters that I would use.
So uh how many yurts did you say were were at uh? Two-person occupancy?
Thirteen.
So it's thirteen and thirteen of each?
Nope, five, they're eighteen yurts total, so five of them are one one-bedroom yurts. And thirteen of them are two-bedroom.
So what do you have for a total?
I'm working towards it.
Many of the, many hotels and inns have convertible couches and rollaway beds, or are there any plants that have convertible couch? That can uh, you know, house kids when they come along, the parents will sleep in the bedroom, the kids on the couch or or roll out beds?
Um, that is a detail I don't know the answer to, we'll have to um talk to our client about that.
Okay.
The the parking calculations that we did are based on um. Bed, sleeping, and we did not have um fold-out couches.
Okay, board, uh, I think we need to move on to findings of fact unless. Somebody has any any other questions that we can't address through those. Uh, questions, uh, while considering the finding of that.
Makes sense to me, Mark.
Okay, Brett, you okay?
Yeah.
Okay, Jeff.
I mean, now that we've covered pull-out couches, yeah, I think we should move on.
Okay, findings of fact. Uh, as you folks may remember. We need to go through each of these and vote on each individual item. And uh. We have now have uh recommended by um our counsel and Jesse, I believe. Uh, some extra ones that we'll consider at the end, so first, let's go to the um. What do you think, Jesse, the performance standards or the utilization of the uh?
Two sets here, the one is search utilization of the site.
Yep.
Yeah, that should be the first one, okay. Okay, and um just for you uh interested parties. After each of these, I'll be reading. A comment. Uh, that is uh, that has been created by our code enforcement officer slash town manager. It helps guide us through this whole process, we may not agree with what he says, so uh, it's just a heads up there.
Yeah, I would, I would just add that, correct, their comments to help you locate the. What part of the application may be referencing this performance standard.
Okay, thank you, we all said. Utilization of the site. Refer to the USA utilization of site narrative in tab three of the application binder, page thirty-three. I did that earlier and I saw it.
Mark?
Yes.
Are we starting with the site? Plan review, or should we start with the land use first?
I just discussed that with Jesse and he said uh site plan review first. Is there a reason why we should do one or the other first?
No, I was just looking, then we have these other checklists.
And we'll do that afterwards, that's a recommendation of of Diane, yes.
Okay.
That's the zone standards review, that's.
Yeah, and and there's actually some things in there that just duplicate things that are in. The findings of facts that we're doing now, we basically just have to affirm that, I guess. Okay. I'm all set on that, uh, anybody else?
Oh, that's good. Do you want motions and seconds?
We'll have to have a motion and a vote. On each one of these individually, so it's gonna take a while.
Yeah, and you'll need to state why you feel it's been met or not met.
Well, that makes it trickier, Jesse.
It's already eight o'clock, isn't it? Okay, I'll I'll take a motion.
All right, we'll see, well, hopefully we'll get better at this as we go along, but um I'll make a motion that um. The application meets. Require uh, the utilization of the site requirement, um. Uh, because the plan reflects the natural capabilities of the site.
Do I have a second?
Yes, I'll say.
Okay, motion is second to uh find the utili- utilization of the site uh condition has been met. Any discussion? During nine, I'll call for a vote, Lawson?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Myself, yes. That's been met. Adequacy of the road system. Jesse's comments, the project will increase traffic by an estimated forty-one to eighty-four peak hour trips. The main DOT has granted a permit, MDOT requires, that's a road opening permit, I take it, Jesse, right?
Yes.
Yeah, and uh MDOT requires traffic study of estimated peak hour trips as a hundred or more. Refer to the adequacy of road system narrative and supporting documentation in tab three of the application. Ider, age thirty-four. At the flip one page.
I'll make a motion that the uh adequacy of road system requirement has been met. Um, because the project does not increase uh peak hour trips. Um, does not meet the threshold of a hundred peak hour trips per hour.
Have a second?
I'll I'll second it.
Okay, motion is second on the table to find that the adequacy of the road system condition has been met because the project does not. Does meet the threshold, does not meet the threshold of a hundred peak trips per hour. Any discussion?
Yeah, um, this is sort of for Diane. You know, you can go to these manuals and say this is a secondary or primary road or and 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 compute these. Without taking consideration what the actual road looks like. And I think we can take notice. That our main artery through our town is not exactly the safest road in the world for pedestrians and bicyclers. And we're adding a lot to it, and and when can we consider the fact that our road is not. Su- set up to take on more and more traffic, because it's not a very safe road to be on, we all know that, we take, we drive it every day, each one of us. And and it concerns me that we're adding more to a road that that is very unsafe. Especially pedestrian, people walk dogs on it, this summer, the bicycles aren't been astounding number because of the increased. Use of the island by tourists and so forth, um, it's not a safe road, and just to go to manuals to look at this. Is I'd say insensitive to what the situation really is.
This Diane, not the other Diane? That to me?
Diane O'Connor. Diane O'Connell.
Our council Diane.
Okay.
And Diane, you're having to answer. Yeah, I I thought about that, Jeff, because. You know, the road over there, it has a. You know, high crown, it falls off, the shoulders are broken. I mean, there's no doubt about that. But it's. It's it's also, it's tough because it's so subjective. And there was a comment by, it was interesting comment. A person in the last public. Hearing that talked about. And I'm gonna get this completely wrong, but he talked about the road, he talked about progress and talked about the fact that that this light. Spur the state to make some upgrades. I think, Mark, you commented that the town's in that for fifty percent as well. That comment. And I just think about the big picture and we're we're really talking about here is, you know. You know, we talked about the community, we talked about. You know, bringing more people here and how this is going to impact that. And I think it will a little bit, but I don't think it moves a needle that much. I mean, it's, this is a news flash to anybody. We live on Mount Desert Island. Next to Acadia National Park. People want to come here. They're gonna come here whether they build this campground or not. And there'll be more people that come here every year. There'll be more people that use that road. A bit ultimately, I'm a cyclist. It's like this is the worst place in the world to cycle. It's terrible. Ultimately, what needs to happen is the roads need to be upgraded. And I don't, I just don't know. And that's a bigger. It just feels like it's a bigger issue. Uh, and it's not necessarily something that. Should trip up. An an applicant for a project that otherwise meets the requirements because the state. Hasn't maintained the road to the level that it it's designated. I mean, I and I guess I'll stop there. And again, I feel like it's kind of, we heard the word squishy. This is a squishy one. It's tough. But but I also have heard the comments and I completely understand.
I I agree. The road is really dangerous. I you know. I got a bike thinking I'm gonna get some exercise. And I rode it a few times and I decided I wouldn't be exercising for long for long because I'd probably get killed. So I found a better way. Anyway. One concern I have there is, okay, let's say. We find this condition isn't met. And along comes a much smaller project. Along that road. One that we had normally given okay to. We would have to find that that wasn't met too because the same conditions exist. Convinced me otherwise.
Uh, your operative word there was small. We're talking about a very large, large commercial. Campground going in fifty-five. Sixty-six if we include the other one we approved. So it's it's not like this is. And this could be the first of the next big one down. How do you say no to the next big one down because our roads are terrible shape? And we're the planning board, happen to know that. The town wouldn't even pay for the short section of driveway from the salt pit down to the road. They want to put it next year's budget. Is that right, Jesse? That's the cheapest asphalting you can possibly do. So the cost upgrade the road is astronomical. It's unrealistic to think it's gonna change because suddenly there's cat more traffic there because of a campground. It's not realistic. It's not the real world. Go on, let's think about what this town can do and can't do. They can't afford that. We have to live with a road that's not great. They they do that black paint asphalt job every year. Three weeks later, it's already cracking and 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 uh and you have a dog, Mark, walking a dog along that road is worse than riding a bike. And one of our letters we got this week mentions the two deaths we've had from bicyclers on our road. And 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 reminders of it. And it's it's a serious consideration. It's not a safe road. And now we're putting a large, large. Development. To increase traffic on it. And it was pointed out by the opponents. That we have a lot more tr- trips in and out because there's, they can't cook there. Cafeteria isn't large enough to feed them all. It's ridiculous. It's never gonna be able to feed twenty seats of that many guests and their staff. So they're gonna be going in and out, visiting the park, going in and out, eat, going in. It's it's just going to increase dramatically the traffic. On a road that's not safe.
Jeff, I believe you uh, hold a second Lawson. I believe you were asking a question of Diane maybe, and she didn't get a chance to answer.
So Jeff, so your question was, when can you um look at your own um knowledge and opinion of the roads in relation to? The criteria set forth in section B. Was that your, essentially your question?
Diane, my question was, the process to get. The traffic acceptable was taken out of manuals. And 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 rating a road. It's insensitive to the condition of the road that we all residents here know is not in good shape. And can we consider that fact that this road is? Not a safe road to be on for bicycles, that's a popular summer activity. And and walkers and dog walkers and all the rest. Can we take that into consideration? In saying that this uh adds too much traffic to the road and creates a dangerous situation. Let's remember, we're supposed to be looking out for the safety, health of our community, not just looking at these standards and saying a manual says it's okay.
Yeah, so the so the key key question is to go back to the standard and it says vehicle access to the site must be on roads which have adequate. Capacity to accommodate the additional traffic generated by the development. And then it goes on to talk about um different standards within that. So you're gonna be weighing up the um. The application materials and the evidence on traffic, the peer review. Um, with the actual physical adequacy of the road. So you know, you're looking at both of those to come up with. Whether or not that standard's being met.
Yes.
So you know, you do have um the actual physical road that you've got to consider as well. That's what I'm saying.
We don't have, did you say?
No, you you can. I mean, I think you, you know, it says right here. That it must be on roads which have adequate capacity to accommodate the additional traffic.
And I'm taking the position the road rated out of the manual doesn't apply well for our town. And the article two of our and says we, the land use ordinances and so forth are to protect the health, safety and welfare of the community. Quote unquote. I I think we're neglecting our duties. We don't take consideration. The condition of that road and how dangerous it is to add more, this much more traffic to it.
There was another Diane Morabito, who's a traffic engineer, and she was. Going to provide any professional thought she had if it's hopeful, but I'll I'll leave it there.
Okay. We we may get to her. That's the confusion. Okay. Lawson? You had your hand up.
Yeah, uh Andy, Andy preempted me a little bit because I was gonna actually ask Diane Morabito. Not to like regurgitate your report, which I think is really clear. Done by a qualified engineer. That's great. We understand that the peak hour trips according to the. Um, manuals are below the threshold. But I think sort of to speak to what Jeff and what lots of the sort of community members have spoken to, which the the feeling of driving down the road and. I guess I'm curious from your experience as an engineer. Is there a? What do we do with those feelings? And we're just like people driving who feel, you know, unsafe or walking or biking. And as a planning board, can you give us some guidance or advice about? How do we reconcile your numbers which say, oh, you're below the threshold, so it's on? With our feeling, which makes us feel like we don't want more traffic on the road.
Yeah, well, there there are several things. The capacity issue is one. The ordinance specifically talks about capacity, which is volume driven. And the volume numbers do come from manual, but they're very well documented um. And based on lots of lots of studies collected over decades. So. We're pretty confident of the numbers that it will generate. Again, we were very conservative in that we assumed that. The cafe and the fitness center were open to the public. And if they're not going to be. All of those excess trips won't be going there. Some of the numbers we had were quite high. Allowing for that to be open to the public. In terms of safety, the things that we typically look at as engineers, our biggest measure. Are the accidents that are happening out there and whether there are high crash locations nearby. And I said in the report, there were no high crash locations within three miles of the site. I went back and got the actual accident data from DOT. Not only are there no high crash locations, there are none approaching the high crash location along that three mile stretch of road. Additionally, it's a point five seven mile segment that goes along the front edge of the road itself, the front edge of the site. And that point five seven miles, it wasn't a single accident in the past three year period. So the accident data does not indicate that there's a significant safety issue out there. The other thing to keep in mind is the number of trips that we're adding. And again, the numbers in the report were very high, are about ten percent during peak hours. That ten percent. Increase in traffic volumes. And again, now without it being open to the public, it's probably more like four or five percent. Isn't gonna make a big difference in the way that road feels. Or the volume passing by you if you're riding a bike or walking. It's a very small increase in that traffic volume. So it's not gonna really change the condition that's out there. I don't know if that helps, but.
Thank you. So I guess my. Question for the planning board is like, uh, if. If, and Jeff, I hear you saying that this feels like a big project um and lots of traffic.
It is a big project.
Okay, um, and it's really bigger than anything else we've looked at. Uh. Is it clear to you how much smaller it would need to be in order for it to not feel big?
Yeah, it it there's two ways looking at that. Remember now, uh. If we go along with this size now, we can't say. No to the next one because we've set a a standard. And so I I think it would be fair for this board to look at and think about. Uh, what we think would be a size that's manageable and and doesn't. Increase the 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 danger dangers in the road and traffic. I'm not gonna avoid your question. Do I have a specific number? No.
Yeah.
But I have a specific concept that a smaller site would work. And the best way to get to that is for us to explore it and talk about it.
Well, and I heard Diane say that it's a ten percent increase, which. She said was not a significant. It's hard for me to know whether or not that's. What that, you know, would feel that. Yeah, go ahead.
That is ten percent with the fitness center and cafe being open to the public. If they're not, it's much less than that.
Correct. Yeah, and I don't think that we've resolved that yet. At least I don't. I don't feel like we've made a determination whether or not it's public or not. So I'm just sort of. Assuming that it's like as as submitted. Open to the public. It's a ten percent increase. If we shrink that, then it's a four percent increase. But I guess I'm not sure how to. Determine whether four percent is. Is like, if four percent's okay, ten percent's not, that sort of seems a little arbitrary to me right now.
And that's why you have to really just look at what's the standard presented and ask yourself whether they've met it or not. Even you start going down the road of how people feel, it's just, you're not, it's not how. It's not how we need to proceed.
Right. Well, and one of the things that Diane O'Connell said earlier was like that the standards need to be something the applicant can like. Understand and can submit and then can demonstrate that they've met. And uh if the standard was like, you have to make us feel safe on the roads, that might not be. Uh, that might not pass, but we said that they've got to be. Below a hundred peak hour trips.
Okay, are we ready to vote?
No.
Jeff did, okay, go ahead.
Question for Diane. I wanted to speak and see your last name, sorry. The traffic expert. Um, these manuals, uh which I've never had the privilege of reviewing. Does it break it down to a point that you can look up at fifty-five? Site or sixty-six site campground that have no cooking facilities and and and. I'm gonna say there's no eating, so it's twenty, it's not gonna take care of much. Does it include increased traffic because of that?
It does not. It's an average rate.
Okay.
Um, but in this case, the cafe will take care of, you know, the lack of. Cooking facilities. People can go there or they can go offsite. When people are camping. They're often out and about. They go out hiking, they go out for dinner, they go out for lunch. So. Not everybody who camps prepares all of their meals at their site. Very few probably do, maybe breakfast, which people will probably. You know. Bring pop tarts and donuts or something, you know. So I think that. Their their average rates, but you're not gonna see a big variation from those numbers because there's no cooking facilities. It's. People in the camp sites are in and out. Um, you know, multiple times a day and the numbers provided for that.
And 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 my experience in camping. Growing up is the whole point of camping is be able to cook outside and have that whole wilderness experience. And and they can't do that here. So they they're being forced onto the roads for three meals a day.
Wait, they can cook over the fire. I mean, I don't think it's a cooking facility. Like they don't have cooking facilities in there, but they can camp, they can still cook over their solo stove. They can do the marshmallows thing. They can bring their camp stove. And cooking them, you know. On the picnic table or. I mean, I think that everything I've heard so far is it operates much like a campground. Well. A much nicer campground than any of the ones.
Except you have a toilet in your.
Yeah, right. I mean, like, yeah, I've never, but. Um, but I think you can cook outside and presumably you could even, anyway.
I I was under the impression that's the idea. I I believe they're even gonna have pre, like Terramore. Does pre-prepared foods. You buy them and you take them, you cook them over your campfire. Is that true, Andy, or whoever wants to answer that?
That's another Cynthia question, I think.
Okay, yes, Mark, that was, that is the assumption, is that there would be prepared. Kind of packages, meal packages, which is um common at at glamping resorts. And then you take them home, right? And you can heat them up over the. Smokeless fire pit.
And and these smokeless fire pits. They don't get so hot that. You can't cook over them successfully? I mean, can you can? Okay.
No, the 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 design of them is 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 so if you want to cook over them and you have the. Equipment to do so, you can a grill.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm gonna call for a vote. We have a motion on the table to find that the adequacy of the road system has been met. Because the project. Does not meet the threshold uh of a hundred feet per hour. Is that correct?
Right, that's that's the motion.
That's okay. All in favor? Lawson?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Jeff?
No.
Myself, yes, it's been met. So three to one. Jeff with a descending vote. Okay. Access into site. See the issuance of the curb cut road opening permit for MDOT site.
Mark, let me just interrupt.
Yes.
There's something about the way you're moving your head, that you're getting away from your microphone, so it's hard.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm trying to read this stuff and you know, I'm an old guy and my eyes aren't good.
You're doing, you're doing well.
Thanks, Lawson. Access into site, Jesse's comments. See the issuance of the curb cut road opening permit from MDOT. Site distances four hundred feet on either side. Refer to narrative and supporting documents in tab three of the application binder page. Fifty-six. We already discussed some of this in our last little discussion.
I'll make a motion to find the access to site requirement uh or condition met. Because the site distances um. Are more than adequate. For the curb cut. Period.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Okay, we have a, do I have a second? I'll second it for. Uh, motion on the table that the access into the site condition has been met because the site uh distance. How did you phrase it? I'm sorry, I started.
Because the site distances are more than adequate. Because the site distances are more than adequate.
Are more than adequate, okay. For the curb cut, okay. Any discussion?
I'll just point out that I'm trusting the MDOT. And I feel like the MDOT sort of conflicts with my experience. Every time I drive up that hill, I feel like, wow. Jumped up on me, but I'm trusting the engineers on this one.
The engineer that originally issued a permit for another county.
Uh, right, right.
Well, well, Lawson. Has all set the vote, yes. Thank you.
Trust the engineers, Jeff.
Okay.
You have more trust than I do.
Yeah, wow.
Mark, can I just add a comment?
Sure.
If you're making, when you're making a motion, if you are looking at something specific such as the main DOT permit. It would be helpful if you put that as your finding, such as. You find the site distance is more than adequate based on the permit from the main DOT.
Great, thank you.
This would be helpful moving forward.
Great. So you want to, you want to amend that, Lawson?
I do, yeah, I'll amend my my motion to say that it's, uh, that meets the. The condition, um, because the site distance is more than adequate, um, as evidenced by the. Curb cut road o- road opening permit from MDOT.
Okay, I'll second that. Um, any discussion this time?
Well, I do feel Lawson made a legitimate observation.
Yes.
I mean, he has a lot of horse and driving through, he feels that he already feels that there's.
Although that might have to do with the speed that I'm driving, but uh. So we we shouldn't take that into consideration too much.
When I play.
And you drive slower than tourists.
Okay, I'm going to call for a vote. Motion and second on the table to uh, find that the access in this, the site condition has been met. Because this uh. Uh, the site distance is adequate enough for the issuance uh, of a curb cut road opening permit from the MDOT. All in favor, Lawson?
Yes.
Um, Brett?
You're muted, Brett.
Yeah, I I just want to make a comment. As I look at that requirement, and I just want to make sure we have the record correct. As I look at that requirement, access to the site, there were a number of subparts to that, the the, you know. The the piece about the site distance in the road is in C1. But there is C2, C3, C4, C5, C6, 7, 8. That all fall under access into the site. If that's the motion we make, it feels like we're covering one aspect of 10 pieces of access to the site.
Hmm.
So I, we need to, we to to complete the record and show that we've considered the full requirements, the motion needs to be. I hereby move that the applicant has met the requirement of access to the site. Um, under article nine. Uh, of the site plan review ordinance, including in subsection C, access to the site, subpart ones, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and eight.
Okay, so we have a motion second on the table. And you're suggesting, and we started voting, and you're suggesting that we need to consider new things.
Well, you have to. Well, we need to consider the entire thing, not just the one piece.
Yeah, the one piece. I I understand what you're going for. I'm just trying to do the procedure here.
Yep.
Maybe we should vote it down. Lawson's already voted, right?
I've already voted.
You said yes.
No.
Perfect.
I'm going to vote no.
Okay, Jeff.
No.
Myself, no. Okay, the motion fails. Okay, Brett, you want to make that motion again?
Sure, I I will move that.
I'm sorry, Jan.
Has met um, all of the requirements under access to site under article nine. Uh, subsection C. That includes subsection, uh, subsection 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8, addressing um. Sightlines in the driveway, a point of access and egress, the grade of any proposed drive. Um, the intersection of any access and egress drive. Um, primary access to and egress from the lot. Uh. Traffic controls. Um, sufficient capacity for um, entry wave or entering vehicles and um. And limiting the number of driveways.
Well, congratulations. I think you've just made the longest motion in uh, planning board history.
All second. All second.
Okay, we have a motion and second on the table to um, uh, find the uh, condition has been met for the stated reason. I'm not going to repeat that. I'm not even sure I can at this point. Uh, any discussion?
The, when you word it that way, then I look at the applicant's application, does he address all eight points?
They do. They do. It's on pages 56, 57, and 58. They absolutely do.
So I would suggest that you make specific findings from the record of where you see, um, you know, what supports that.
Sure, as specified, so all towards the end of what I said. And if there are a court reporter here, I'd have him reading, read it back and I could add it. But uh, to the end of that, as as reflected in the applicant's application, at pages 56, 57, and 58.
Okay. So that satisfies you, Diane?
And I think that's the law, that when I look through, that's the only one that has like all those subparts. That I can, so we'll get, we'll just need to, as we go through it, make sure we hit everything. The the document seems to really summarize and focus on just kind of one piece of it.
That's great. Thank you, Brett. Yeah.
So you just, you need to make findings to support the conclusions that you're making, the conclusions of law. And, you know, find out the specific areas of the application that support them, make actual findings of fact. That support your general motion, which is the conclusion. So for example. Like you did on the first one with the driveway opening, it's supported by. The um, permit from main DOT. So you're finding a fact is. The main DOT permit, um.
Head of finding.
And then the conclusion is that it meets that particular standard.
So what what we should do then is scratch that one and start over and take each one in turn. You know, is is met the access to site under C1 because da 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 da. C2 because, and just doing one at a time and try to, instead of trying to tackle it all at once.
Surely it would be easier.
Yeah, I mean, so I I think we just start, actually. Lawson's motion to begin with would have worked fine. Have we voted bind down yet, the long one? I I understand what Diane's getting at. You need, we need to provide. Uh, findings of, you know, our factual support for our conclusions. We can't just state a conclusion.
And is is the. Findings of fact, oh, I see, and the fact, the fact. That it exists on page 56 through 58, that's not specific enough?
Yeah, I know, because they say, like, under point two, it says here, enter the entrances over 550 feet. From the Kellytown Road and Clark Point Road. Like, we need to, what she's saying is we'd actually need to say that, not just say it.
All right.
Is that what you're saying, Diane?
Yeah, so you need to um, find. Find factual, something factual from the application that supports the conclusion.
Yeah, okay.
So whereabouts in that page is that?
Okay, so we need to vote this down and start all over again, correct?
Yeah.
Oh, boy.
It's all right.
Lawson?
Nope.
Brett?
No.
Jeff?
No.
Myself, no. Now, we can start over. I really feel sorry for Jan Sprague tonight.
All right.
Okay.
Brett, we can tag team this one.
Yeah, you can start with the driver. I mean, yeah, because your your original one actually was 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 okay, it was just.
I may, I may, I remember, but I won't try. Okay, so um, I'm going to make a motion that we find um. The site, the the condition 9C1 to be complete. Um, because the. Uh. Because the. Of the issuance of the curb cut road opening permit by the MDOT. And then, okay, sorry, because the site distances are more than adequate, as evidenced by the issuance of the curb cut road opening permit by MDOT.
Done good to you, Brett?
Yeah, I'll second, yeah.
Okay, uh. Motion and second on the table to find that the access into the site. A condition has been met. Um. Because 9C1 and and find that 9C1 to be complete because of issuance of the. Curb cut road opening by the MDOT. Is that basically it? Okay.
Close enough, yep.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing nine, I'll call for a vote. Lawson?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Myself, yes, four zero. So that was C. Or do we have to do the other ones for C now?
We just do the other ones for C.
We do.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion that the applicant has met the standard. Under article nine, uh, C2. And that the uh, point of access and egress must be located to avoid hazardous conflicts with existing. Um. Turning movements and traffic flows, as evidenced by the fact that the the entrance is over 550 feet from Kellytown Road. And Clark Point Road. Um, and I'll also cite Diane, uh. The engineer, whose name I can't find, um, her.
More, more libido.
Okay, her comments about the um. Lack of accidents in the last three years in that uh, that stretch of road.
Second.
Motion is second on the table to find that uh. This part of uh, access of the site condition has been met for the stated reason. I'm trying to move things along here, folks, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, Lawson?
I I want to discuss. I was fine on the motion to start incorporating the accident report from Diane.
Yeah, I was interested. Why, why did you feel the need to include that, Brett?
Because I, it was based part, because I took that into consideration on whether I felt the applicant met this requirement. The what by a policy must be located to avoid hazardous conflicts. I'm assuming. That, you know, when they looked at, there are probably other locations that they could have put that road and the, with that stretch of road, as I understand it. You know, people have talked about the fact that there's a hill there. Um, and I think that 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 we're talking about the access and egress and that it struck me. That she pointed out that there have been no accidents on that stretch of road in three years. I think that speaks to that, to that point.
Diane, any comments on that?
It's up to the board to make the findings. Um, I can't, you know, make those findings for you.
Thank you.
Well, Diane, I think he may be asking is. Do we need to incorporate that last statistic? Because I'm uncomfortable with that.
What are you, what are your concerns, Jeff? I'm just curious about.
Goes back to accidents are freak things that happen randomly and they haven't happened in their past, but we're adding more. More traffic turning in that exact area on roads we've talked about in such poor conditions. I I don't like citing. That just because it hasn't happened in the past, it's okay to go forward when we're changing the condition there.
Brett?
I don't even matter as fond of that. The way, I mean, the way I looked at it, I'm basing it on what I'm, what I'm seeing here and what I personally heard. And what I personally heard was, what what this talks about is a point of access and egress. And it must be located to avoid hazardous conflicts with existing turning movements and traffic flows. And so we heard from. We heard from a traffic engineer about that specific stretch of road where the access and egress is, that there had been no accidents in three years. I think that's relevant to the, to to what, whether they met that standard. And just, I found it to be helpful. And I thought it was kind of interesting. I think it probably supports their point. Um. I I don't know why. What happens in the future, uh, you know, I. I don't know.
I don't know if it's necessary, but I have no problems with it. I'll call for a vote unless somebody else has something else to say. Lawson?
Uh, yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Jeff?
No.
And myself, yes. Three to one, although. Yeah, here's an interesting point. If all these that we're voting on right now. Are about C. How, I I guess, how do we tally them? I guess, basically. Because we all prove it, it's been met. Okay, never mind.
Well, I I mean, it can't we, I mean, and Jesse's worksheet. Is a a worksheet. We can actually like add paragraphs between C and D.
Yeah.
Or, and and so now we're basically finding C1, complete C2, complete C3, you know, we haven't done C3 yet, but.
Okay, okay. C2 complete, okay.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion that uh. Condition 9C3 is uh, has been met. Because the access design plan and profile um, are not more than. Uh, 3% plus or minus for a minimum of two car lengths from the intersection.
Second. Motion. C3 is complete. Agreed of any proposed.
Mark, we're losing you again.
Okay. Yep, sorry.
But the motion is on the table for the stated reasons.
Yes, exactly. Thank you. Any discussion, any discussion?
Was it seconded?
I think Brett seconded.
Yeah, I seconded it.
Or Bart, okay.
Hearing no discussion, I'll call for a vote, Lawson?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Myself, yes, four zero. Now, what are we on, C?
Four.
We are, and I know, I know we're in um. We're in C4B, I believe, because it's less than 1,000 trips. Is that correct?
Uh, 4B.
Yeah.
Ye- yes.
So I'm looking for, in the applicant's application, it references. An attached traffic report.
Which is actually before, it's like page 40.
Yeah, okay. So I will move that the applicant has met the requirement in article 9C4. Um. As the intersection of any access drive or proposed street meets and functions at a level which will allow safe access into and out of the project. That less than 1,000 trips have generated, and that's as reflected in the. Traffic engineer's report of the application at page.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
Is that's where the report starts?
Yeah, okay.
Go here a second?
Second.
Motion and second on the table to find that C4 is uh, complete because, for to say the reason. Motion is second on the table to find that C four is a complete because for to say the reason. Any discussion?
A question for Greg. Their engineer, see there?
Yep. I'm sure he is.
Yeah, he's there. A trip generated analysis. Are we doing fifty-five campsites or sixty-six campsites since that campground becoming in and out of the same campground?
Been a defer to Diane, but we included the calculations in both instances in the abundance of caution based on the board's feedback to date. So then maybe you want.
Trip generation included the fifty-five plus the eleven approved already was based upon all sixty-six.
Am I reading this wrong, but it can't? I see it saying fifty-five in your report.
It goes on to talk about the extra eleven. The bottom of page two. It talks about the extra eleven and then the top of page three, it has the total trip generation with the eleven yards as well, which is what was used for the analysis.
Let's go.
Does that make sense, Jeff?
Oh, yes.
We did it both ways in the study to show it to you both ways, but then all the analysis was based with the eleven yards that's at the top of page three. To be conservative.
Okay. Thank you.
Satisfied?
Yes.
Okay. I'll call for a vote. We did have a second, right? Get confused now. Okay, Lawson?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Four zero for C four, right?
I'll make a motion that the application meets the requirements for nine C five. Or I guess I should say it's not applicable because the the application is not on a quarter lot or the the project is not on a corner lot.
Say that again. State that again, please.
I'm making a motion that condition nine C five is not applicable because the project is not on a corner lot.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion is second on the table to find that nine C five is not applicable for the stated reason. Any discussion?
The gate at the Kellytown Road will will not be used as an additional access route. Is that correct? It's only for emergency.
But who are you asking?
Great, I guess.
Anyone who can answer my question?
That's right, application. That is what's in the application. Correct.
Okay, we all said, because I'm going to call for a vote otherwise. Lawson?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Four zero.
How many more? I actually think that maybe C six is probably not applicable either refers to you know, directional islands or traffic controls within public streets. I don't think there's any proposal to put any particular islands or anything on the on the road. There certainly will be internal signs and whatnot for the paths and whatnot, but I I'm going to move that Article nine C six is not applicable to this application.
I'll second.
Motion is second on the table to find that Article nine C six is not applicable to this application for the stated reason. Any discussion? Greg, no plans for a turning lane or anything, right at this point?
Mark.
I I couldn't hear you.
No, not on the plan.
Yeah, I didn't see it. Okay, just double checking.
Yes, sir.
Any discussion? All in favor? Lawson?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Four zero. Going to seven now. Have a motion?
Sure, I'll move that the applicant has met the standard under Article nine subsection C seven in that the accessways have been designed with sufficient capacity to avoid queuing of entering vehicles. In that it's been designed to be eighteen feet wide with twenty foot radius turns. The width and turn radius are wider than the approach and facilitate ease of entrance.
Second.
Motion is second on the table to find nine C seven condition been met for the stated reason. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? I'll call for a vote. Lawson?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Four zero. Nine C eight.
I'll make a motion that condition nine C eight has been met because there is only one entrance planned for the project.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Motion is second on the table to find that nine C eight has been met for the stated reason. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. Lawson?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Four zero. That's it, huh?
Yeah, we're almost done.
This is, you know, at the way we're going. We're going to be here till like three in the morning.
No, we're not. We just finished nine. It's after nine o'clock. I think we should adjourn and continue this at our next meeting, but only on the third item on our first list.
Yeah, we have to get agreement of the applicant, though.
Of course, they're going to agree. They don't want to stay up later either.
Don't assume too quickly, Mr. Young.
Pushed to nine thirty, but that's just me.
So I I I think you keep going until you hit that point where you say we've gone far enough. And again, we'll work with you. We're an applicant that is going to work with you on conditioning and and you're working hard. We're we're right here with you. So.
You're paid to be here. Brett, you suggested nine thirty. Shall we see if nine thirty works the rest of us?
Well, considering I haven't had anything to eat, nine thirty sounds pretty good.
Will the applicant agree that we can turn this?
And I know it's past your bedtime, Jeff, and
Oh, way past.
and getting near mine.
I can agree when turn this over to November ninth, our next board meeting?
No, I I think what you what you suggested earlier might be better, and that is that we look at the possibility of a a meeting soon. And then it would it would ease our comfort and and know that we're, you know, working together to to get there. So.
We are working together.
No, but let's let's keep working together. I think
Working together.
The date for the next meeting is important. So let's 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 think about tomorrow night at at six P M. If we need to continue.
I believe Lawson couldn't make that, correct?
And I can't make it. I'm not in town until the eighth.
I think Lawson can make it. He just couldn't make it till five thirty.
All right, I've got a four thirty interview that'll go at least an hour, then I gotta hustle back to my school. So. But I think I can make it back by six, but.
Jeff, could you zoom in?
No, I'll be on a plane.
They don't have Wi-Fi on your plane?
I would ask.
The West Coast had Wi-Fi.
I would ask the applicant go along with my suggestion November ninth, please. Let's act in good faith here and move this forward. We're working well with you. We're going through this. It's not unreasonable request.
I I I think under the circumstances, I would want to work towards the six thirty start time tomorrow night and and keep going. And if we falter, then then we can reschedule for November ninth. It's that late. We we've just we've just got a a a lot that we've done, and we would like the opportunity to work with the chair and the board as we can. So I'll leave it there.
So if I if I hear you right, Andy, you say tomorrow at six thirty. And if we don't make it through that, then go to the ninth. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yeah. After a good faith effort tomorrow night and then continue to to the ninth if we need to. I I I'm not. I'm not trying to, you know, make this hard for anyone. I just it it's it's a fair bit of work to get both through site plan review and land use ordinance standards. I would say that I don't have any problem with omnibus motions on sections just to 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 move it along. I think the comment was that findings do need to support your conclusions, but I I I think it might have been okay to do an omnibus motion and then just be citing the 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 evidence that supports it. But but but, you know, it's the cadence that's 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 taking it for a bit of time, and that's understandable. Now, you're being very diligent. So just just want to provide the procedural opportunity to keep moving. That's all. Thanks.
And I I agree. I think the board is being very, very diligent and and this process does does take some time. If I understand correctly, if you're meeting tomorrow night, is Mr. Young not able to be present tomorrow night?
No, I'm not.
I would have.
I would be on plane, but be on the way out of town.
We would still. We would still have a quorum.
But I would. I am just going to the record for continuing. I know you'll have a quorum. But this has been a long process with the involvement of all four of the planning board members, and I and I would respectfully suggest that that it would be inappropriate to continue deliberations without all four of you there, even though I I I acknowledge that you have a quorum of three.
So the law does provide for the opportunity to have members that haven't participated to every every meeting familiarize themselves with the record. You're clearly keeping an excellent record tonight. You know, we'll 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 work on transcribing the 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 review, but I I I think it it is in the course of human events, it is sometimes necessary to accommodate a board member who can't be present to allow him or her to familiarize himself with with the record. So it does happen, and I just think we need to keep going. We'll 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 never get down.
We don't have. We don't have a board member that's not present except for Beth, and she's recused herself. She obviously says she has a conflict of interest.
Right. But what I'm saying is if you you get through several standards of review and you have a quorum and you take votes, that's a step forward. And if number young needs to rejoin the process, he can familiarize himself to the record. We 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 don't have to be subject to any one individual member's schedule because it happens. It just happens in the course of human events. So.
Well, it does happen, and respectfully, the planning board meets every two weeks, and I know that you're trying to accommodate this, and this process has been rushed. But I think at this point there there is an issue of, you know, a key planning board member who's been participating throughout this whole proceeding, not being available, not just during the public hearing process, but in the actual deliberations and the votes on each of these standards. I just don't think it's appropriate to. I mean, I'm not suggesting a delay for a long period of time. I just think to say we you have to meet tomorrow.
That this has been rushed, Attorney Chow absolutely stresses any manner of incredulity. This whole this process has been stretched out. And I, you know, my sense is even throughout this evening, the last meeting, there was a little bit of anchor dragging going on, and we really need to move it forward. I mean, we really do. It it just it feels like we 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 are going over some of the things, same things over and over and over. And I think there might be some ulterior motives to trying to drag this out, and this is going to go to court either way. I think we need to move forward. We need to create create a record. We have I I I'm surrounded by heaps of paper that suggest to me it actually hasn't been rushed. And but we do need to move forward.
And Ms. Chow? If Jeff would happen to be ill tomorrow, if he would happen to be in an accident or something like that, we would still proceed with a three-member board or quorum, right? So I don't know if I buy that argument either.
Well, I I understand. I understand, and I understand. I I we are not seeking to delay the process unduly, but you you've met tonight and and for the first time tonight suggested that that the board meet tomorrow night. And I'm simply suggesting that you stick to you know, a timeframe where the the board members who have been present for all of these proceedings can participate. That's just a suggestion.
Let me ask you this, Jeff. You're going to be on a plane tomorrow and going somewhere, obviously, and I don't want to ruin any vacation or any of your plans, but I'm just curious. Are you willing? Not tomorrow, but or within the next few days to participate by Zoom? You know, we're in our tenth month here of this application. I've been at every meeting. I've been diligent. I spent a lot of time preparing for tonight. I've got a lot of notes. I've got thoughts. I don't want to miss out on deliberations because I won't be able to have any input if everything gets passed in different sections. I don't have an opportunity. So I respectfully ask my fellow board members to give me the courtesy of a vacation. I already changed because I'd scheduled it for this week, and so I realized I cancel. We switched things around to next week. And now, you know, I I just respectfully ask you honor this, and and I think if the applicant doesn't go along with my very reasonable request, they're not acting in good faith, and that's grounds alone to dismiss this. An applicant doesn't act in good faith.
Thank you. I understand your concerns. Diane? You have any thoughts on this?
Well, you know, as you know, you just need three to make a quorum to have a meeting. So you just have to consider, you know, what both parties have said. The ordinance does require you to make a decision within a certain period of time unless the applicant agrees to extend it.
So let's ask the applicant again if he's willing to go along with my request.
Okay, I guess I'll before we ask the applicant, I I'll just sort of chime in to say that like my preference, I don't know if that matters at all, but would be to have Jeff participate in the decision making and the the fact and findings of fact that this has been a really thorough and challenging process, and I really value all four of our participation in it and so that's my preference for whatever it's worth.
So if I can just make a few observations, they they track with what the board's been having for discussion. So these are not surprising. First is you you had a suggestion that procedurally at the beginning of the evening, you might pick tomorrow night, you you face the question as to whether all but four members could be there, three out of the four could be there. So So if I can just make a few observations, they they track with what the board's been having for discussion, so these are not surprising. First is you you had a suggestion that procedurally at the beginning of the evening, you might pick um uh tomorrow night. You 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 face the question as to whether uh all but um four members could be there, three out of the four could be there. Um, so um you you deferred that question. Um, if if we as the applicant keep deferring the date, um we will not get uh review. Justice delayed is justice denied. So what I'd like to think about is you've got a remote access policy that was put in place to address a pandemic. We we now have that system in place, um and even though the state of emergency uh is is, you know, still around the corner, um we'll come out from under it, but I'll 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 bet you that what we learned as part of remote access is that we can do it in part because folks like Jeff ought to be able to take a vacation, but I myself have been involved in projects where we we structure um um meetings uh to accommodate a vacation, and and we still make it work, and I don't want to be unreasonable. That's not my objective, and I object that um member young thinks that I'm gonna be so unfair that you dismiss the application based upon me being unfair or lacking good faith. I have plenty of good faith towards this board. You've done an incredibly fine job of working through this, but I do think you're gonna need to think about whether from the perspective of being able to get through this with all of the challenges that are presented by the 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 nature of 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 the opposition and the nature of the review um that that will just get tied up forever, and I I do think the the majority of the board has it right, that you 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 will you will have relief in your time if you keep going. So I I'd like to see if there's a possibility of continuing to move forward or to ask member young, is there some way to structure around your vacation that is before November two? Because we we worry about what's um being played out in terms of the strategy, and 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 I can tell you in detail why that strategy bothers me, but that's not really relevant to to the specific question before you tonight, which is how do you keep going through a challenging review and and keep legs under you? So I I think we gotta try a little bit more in discussion amongst the board, and I'm gonna I'm gonna disess for the moment.
Brett? I think you've made yourself clear, but do you want to have anything else to say?
When is the thirty day? When is the thirty day sort of deadline?
Tonight.
Night? Yeah.
It's is it is it thirty days from when we got it complete? Is that the?
Yes.
That's what started the clock. Yeah.
Yeah.
Just as we'd agree to reasonable conditions, we'll agree to a reasonable proposal, but we can't wait until well after November two for all the.
Actually, I think we got a few extra days, didn't we, Andy?
Yes, I think that's right.
What you agreed to the last time, yeah.
Yes, I agree.
But I I mean, I think the question goes back to Jeff. Are you are you willing to attend any meeting to get through this before November second? Are you able to?
I don't know what I'm able to because I don't have in front of me exactly where we'll be, but I know where we're going. Wi-Fi is not available in many locations, so I have no clue saying right now that, you know, it's called camping in the wilderness. I don't know whether I'm gonna be able to get access.
Maybe you should go to a clamping campground that provides Wi-Fi in the luxury.
Actually, you know.
Sorry. Sorry.
We actually researched staying at one of the under the canvas places, uh but they're not around any of the national parks we're going to. So it's funny you mention that. I wanted to do that.
Just trying to make jokes at Magic Team.
It's not a joke. It's serious. I was crushed. I visited the one over in Surrey. I thought it was very interesting, so I thought I'd go stay in one, but there was none where we were going.
I appreciate the humor.
I had to resist uh saying the same thing. Okay, I I you know, Jeff has been an important part of this process. I agree, and I really want him would would really like him to be able to participate, but. You know, we have a quorum. Tomorrow night. I think we're gonna have to just go with that because Andy's not gonna agree to anything else.
Well, Andy, I thank you. You're quite a gentleman. Um, the um another suggestion is, and this is just a shot in the dark, is set it up sometime next week. If I happen to be someplace I can tune in, I'll be there. If not, I won't be there.
Is are there days that, I mean, like.
I don't know. I don't know. I'm not.
You don't know.
I'm not basing my travels around this meeting, but I'm willing to try to see if I might be able to be someplace. Pick out a date. If I'm at at someplace, then it hasn't. I'll tend if not, I wouldn't attend.
What a third are you? Is Thursday better than Wednesday?
I have no clue.
Okay.
Well, in case, let's just have the meeting tomorrow night, and then if we, you know, if we don't get through it, then we will. Maybe Jeff can meet the next make the next one, but the reality is we we have a regulation here, and the applicants, you know, we're supposed to make a decision within thirty days, and I, you know, it just feels like I I don't know what's going on here, but it it's it feels like this thing's getting kicked down the road quite a bit, and there's a lot of people kicking the can, and we need to stop kicking it and 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 just get it done, one way or the other. That's how I feel.
Part of that regulation gives us the flexibility if if the applicant would be agreeable to extend.
Yeah, yeah.
But don't just quote the section that you, you know, works for your argument.
Okay. We could have been working, but we're instead just. Considering all this, uh. It's nine nineteen. I don't see any reason to continue. That's something that I'll take a motion to on from somebody as what we want to do.
I'll move that we um. You know, adjourn this meeting and reconvene uh. Tomorrow evening at um. I don't know if it was six or six thirty.
Six thirty, yeah.
Six thirty to continue the. Uh, review of the application.
By Zoom?
By Zoom.
Have a second? I'll second it. Discussion?
I just respectfully ask my board to honor my vacation schedule. I've spent ten months on this. I've put a lot of effort into it. I'd like to continue and see it through to completion.
If it were entirely up to the board, we'd be right with you, Jeff, but it's not entirely up to the board, also up to the applicant.
Well, we could try supporting mine and then turn the applicant and see if they'll be willing to work with us.
We just could just discuss that for ten minutes.
We we asked you if you were willing to go to any meeting before November second. You said, you know, who knows? That that's not really working with the applicant.
I'm asking the applicant to work with us. Thank you, Brett.
Well, he he did. They said that they that they would entertain any meeting up through November second. And for for, you know, obvious reasons.
Lawson, any comments?
But it's just for the record, I uh I think that I'm inclined to vote in favor of the motion, but I want to voice my uh disappointment that we may not be able to include Jeff in the in tomorrow's meeting or the the, you know, the meeting schedule with Jeff.
I'll second. Great. I don't I don't see where we have a choice.
I'll second that. Yeah, I I agree.
Okay, I'll call for a vote, Lawson?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Jeff? Let me guess.
Want to guess on that one?
Yeah. I'm gonna have to vote yes. I'm sorry, Jeff. Uh. I'm really sorry it came down this way, but.
Oh, not as sorry as I am. Nowhere near. I'm extremely disappointed in how this has been handled, Mark, and and I'm sorry that it's come this way, and I'm extremely disappointed that the applicant wasn't willing to work with us, and it's just it reflects what's going on in this application. Squishy is the lightest word you could use for this at this moment.
Okay. On that bad note. Or unfortunate note, let me rephrase that. Beth, I guess you can come back now. Oh. We set the date for tomorrow. We need to uh set a date for the November ninth, or can we do that tomorrow, Joe Jesse? Where's Jesse?
I think we lost Jesse. Oh, no, Jesse's back.
Yeah, I saw something flash too. Jesse? Maybe his power went up.
He's muted, but. There he is.
Was I the only one missing?
What what happened?
The power blinked, shut my Wi-Fi off.
Oh, okay, so we might get some power losses. Um, do we need to set the date for November ninth too?
Um, I only had your motion on the twenty seventh. I don't have a vote. What was your vote?
Oh. Three to one Jeff was the dissenting vote.
Okay. To hold it tomorrow night at six thirty.
Yes. By Zoom.
Okay.
So did my other question. You want us to set the date for the next November ninth meeting tonight, or do you want to do it tomorrow?
We can do it tomorrow.
Okay. Beth, you've been so quiet. I'll let you make a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion that we adjourn till tomorrow night.
Second.
Okay, motion is second on the table to adjourn until tomorrow night. Um. All in favor, Lawson?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Jeff?
No.
Beth? Beth?
Yeah.
I think she said yes, but yeah, okay, and yes for me. Okay, good night, folks. I'm sorry, Jeff.
Thanks.